All right, let's call this meeting to order. This is the June 21st. How's that possible? June 21st, meeting of the Concord City Planning Board. Madam Clerk, could you call the role?
Chairman Woodfin.
Here.
Vice Chair Foss.
Here.
Member Hicks.
Here.
Member Rosenberg.
Here.
Member Santa Cruz.
Here.
Number Savage.
Here.
Number Fox.
Here.
Okay, we do have a quorum. We will begin the meeting. Quick approval of the minutes. Would someone like to make a motion to approve the minutes of the May 17th meeting as submitted?
So who?
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries. Agenda overview. We're gonna move item nine on the agenda to item 7H under the public hearing sections. Everything else will be heard tonight that's on the agenda. We want to welcome Peter, new associate engineer, and Mike, the city engineering staff, to the table. So if you're wondering why they're sitting there, that's why. Welcome to the table, gents. Okay, we'll move right into 5A. Excuse me, five. Back to my things here. All right. So let's go determination completeness. Do you want to take them in consent or do them individually?
I think we should do them individually.
Okay. 5A, if we could read that into the record.
Oh, sorry. That's my reach over here. Keach Norbstrom, on behalf of James Pomisano, requests major site plan approval for construction of a new 144-unit age-restricted residential development consisting of three new three-story multifamily buildings, a clubhouse and related site improvements, and a conditional use permit for disturbance of a wetland buffer at 33 Old Vauden Road in the medium-density district. Staff does recommend it be determined complete, not a development of regional impact, and the public hearing set for July 19th.
Okay, so staff has found the application complete. Would someone like to make a motion to find the application complete and set the public hearing for, what was the date?
July 19th.
July 19th.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries. Let's read 5B into the record.
TF Moran Incorporated, on behalf of Interchange Development, requests major site plan approval for construction of two new buildings, including a 4,940-square-foot urgent care facility and an approximate 30,000-square-foot mixed-use office retail building, and a conditional use permit for shared parking at 157 and 9 Interchange Drive in the Gateway Performance District. Staff recommends it be determined complete, that it is a development of regional impact, and set the public hearing for July 19th.
Okay, so staff has found the application complete. It is a development of regional impact. Would someone like to make a motion to find the application complete, a development of regional impact, and set the public hearing for July 19th?
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries. That moves us to item six in our agenda. Review applications by consent. We have a few that we're gonna pull. Any member of the audience has any questions or concerns regarding items 6A, B, C, D, E, F, G, H, I, and J? Sorry, could've done that more efficiently. But anybody in the audience have any concerns or questions regarding those applications? We address these, review them, and take them by consent in bulk. If anybody would like to, or has any issues with those, if you can make yourself known. If not, any member of the board wanna pull any of those items from consent? Jeff?
Yeah, I'd look to pull 6B, 6C, and 6H.
6B, 6C, and 6H have been pulled from consent. Any other items from the board's level?
There's 6J also being pulled.
6J, okay. So 6J, so we've got B, C, H, and J being pulled out. Anything else? Okay, so you're gonna make me do the math here and figure out that we're gonna, well, we're gonna take all the items by consent except 6B, 6C, 6H, and 6J. Would someone like to make a motion to approve those applications by consent with architectural design review recommendations?
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries. Okay, let's read item 6B into the record.
Sure. Sousa Signs LLC, on behalf of Bank of New Hampshire, requests ADR approval for replacement with a new 12.5-square-foot sign cabinet, replacement with two new 7.1-square-foot wall signs on the building tower, and replacement with a new 9.1-square-foot wall sign over the building entrance at 167 North Main Street in the Civic Performance District.
Okay, Jeff?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, the issue I have is on the images they provided of the face, Court Street. There's a secondary, looks like a sign, of like a dollar sign on the side of the building. I'd like the applicant to clarify if that is going to be a sign or if it's just a...
Oh, yeah. Yeah, I see it.
And it's actually shown on the other view at the, it's not an existing condition. I've been out there.
The applicant here?
I think we need to clarify that that's somehow not included in the application.
Can you tell Heather that is, I don't see it, I didn't see it anywhere in the application information as far as the number of signs on the building.
Um...
I'm sorry.
Part of me wants to think that's something that Google Maps put in there when, you know, it's a street view of Google Maps.
Oh, and it's got an ATM in it. I think you're right. So if we do look at this as just an image with a overlay on it...
I'm fine with the rest. I just wanted clarification that that is not part, so we make it a condition that whatever's shown there is not...
I can't say for sure, but maybe you just make it, I think that's what it is, so maybe just make it with the condition that that's not actually part of the submission.
It's the two, kinda bracket shape. Okay, that's fine. I just wanted to clarify because it looked kinda odd.
Since the applicant's not here, we can say the two ugly new signs. Is that one, no?
I did not say that.
You didn't say that, okay.
Did not.
All right, so let's take that one. So would you like to make a motion, Jeff, to approve that with the condition that that dollar sign is not part of the approval?
Correct. I'd make that motion and clarify that it's the two signs shown it right on that image, the kinda upside-down L bracket and not the dollar sign, whichever you want.
Okay. Okay, we got a motion on the table? Yes, Heather.
Can I suggest that you also include whatever recommendations ADR made since you're making a brand-new motion?
Do we know what?
They may have made other recommendations about the...
I know, they made recommendations of moving the sign down, but I didn't necessarily agree with that.
No, they decided against that.
They did. Oh, I'm sorry. Then, yes, I would be fine with the ADR.
Okay. So the motion is to approve it as submitted without that dollar sign and the ADR recommendations?
Correct.
Someone like to second that motion?
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries. Let's hear 6C. If we could read 6C into the record.
Sousa Signs, on behalf of Bank of New Hampshire, requests ADR approval for replacement with a new 10.4-square-foot non-illuminated wall sign, and replacement with a new 24-square-foot non-illuminated wall sign at 3 Eagle Square located in the Center Business Performance District.
That I know what you're gonna ask about this, but go.
This logo doesn't match the other logo and the third one that we all have in front of us this evening. So I'm just kinda curious, if this is a new branding, why don't the logos all match?
So I think it's color more than anything.
It's a blue. It's got that extra blue kinda stripe.
So I don't think they're gonna put color on the other one. So the one on North Main Street, 167 North Main, had a blue element.
And the black.
But it is, the only thing, it doesn't show the Bank of New Hampshire tagline underneath it. So it had a blue and black element with the B being blue and the cyan color, I guess it is, and then Bank of New Hampshire spelled out. I don't think they could do that on the front tin that's on that, on that one at 3 Eagle Square, but I don't know that for sure, and the applicant's not here. Oh, no, it's all, so it's the same logo, but it's all one color.
All one color.
Yes.
If I may, if you look at the existing sign of Bank of New Hampshire, you will see the same tonal over that metal.
Yeah, yeah. So it's just a single color, which is common. Although, the wealth management, is that wealth management sign new that's underneath it?
Yes.
A little different from the current.
It is new, and they have the, that on the last page of their application, sign area calculation. You will see wealth management.
So they're just swapping that out.
Never place an existing.
Yes.
All right, so we good with that?
Not thrilled with it. To me, if you're branding something, we could have a lot of applicants that come in here and tell us they have to do these colors, they have to do this text, because it's the branding of the company.
But again, you'll see often logos are in a single color in different scenarios. I get it.
Someone else can make the motion then.
I will make the motion that we approve the sign as submitted with architectural design review recommendations.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
Nay for the record. All right, let's move on to item 6H.
Bor signs, on behalf of Interchange Development, requests ADR approval for a new 25-square-foot internally illuminated wall sign, and replacement with a new 2-square-foot internally illuminated tenant panel at 4 Merchant's Way located in the Gateway Performance District.
All righty, who pulled that? Jeff?
Yeah, I have a question. It says that they're putting a 2-square-foot only, but I noticed the signs on the building are also in the application. Am I mistaken in that? Or were those previously approved and I just don't remember them?
Can you repeat your question?
On Jersey mics. Did you just say the application is only for a 2-foot square-foot sign, but the application clearly includes two other signs?
So this was the one, this was one where they went to, the zoning board hearing was the night after the ADR meeting, and so rather than have them come back to ADR and then have to come back to Planning Board, the zoning administrator had recommended that the ADR make motions on both signs, and so they did. They said, you know, subject to ZBA approval the following night, which they did get their approval. So at this time, both applications are legally allowed, or both signs are legally allowed. We just, and I'm sorry for this, but we did not have the second sign application in the packet. But they both were reviewed by ADR, and there is a second sign application in our system.
We just don't have it?
Yeah.
Well, that's what I'm saying. Here, there's two signs. There's a 25-square-foot and a 2-foot, but there's three different signs in this package. There's the 2-foot, which is the one, I think, that's all...
That's the tenant panel in the standing sign.
Right, and then there's two separate signs. One is 71 by 51 and one is 75 by 55, but the application only calls out for a 25-foot square feet a sign, and that equals to way more than those two, way less than those two signs.
I can't speak to that because I was not aware of the discrepancy.
Heather, my understanding is that there were the two sign applications, one for the front-facing larger sign and then the small tenant panel, and they needed the variance for the other larger sign.
Thank you.
I just wanted to clarify because things weren't adding up. Okay, thank you.
Good catch.
Yeah, good catch, Jeff. Okay, would someone like to make a...
Making your motion approve as-is.
As-is with architectural design.
And ADR.
Recommendations.
Yep, comments.
Okay, wait a second.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries, and we'll go to 6J. Mr. Hicks?
Well, there was a public comment, so I thought this should be pulled to address that.
Yeah, so I'll just give a short, oh, let me read in the record and I'll give a short update. Concord Coalition and Homelessness requests an amendment to ADR approval for exterior elevation changes on a residential structure at 120, 122 Pleasant Street in the IS Institutional District. So Greg Lissard with Concord Coalition contacted me a few weeks ago. He said the porch that's on there is beyond repair. Can we change it for this other, you know, alternative? And I said, sure, you just need to come back to ADR. So they submitted their ADR application, and then, so the original application, they presented to the board that they were making no changes whatsoever to the building exterior, and so they didn't actually even present us with anything except for a couple of photographs. Well, this submission to ADR actually had, was substantially different than the original facade of the buildings, missing things like shutters and lintels and the cupola that was on the building. So it was substantially different, and I didn't really even notice that till recently. So it's a very different application. ADR was not aware of that at the time either, and Mr., now, and then the board can determine what they want, what decision they want to make from there. So in your application is the proposal that Mr. Halli submitted last week or a few weeks ago for the ADR application, and then the photos, those are just basically screenshots from Google Street View.
No dollar signs on them anywhere.
Yeah, yeah. So you're looking at the ones he submitted, and the other attachment is existing photos or street view. It gives, I think it's kind of a bit more of a comprehensive understanding of what these, what these buildings actually look like from the street. He brought some photos too. I'm sorry, Jonathan, I didn't have a chance to upload the photos that you brought if you have a flash drive that you want.
I don't.
Okay.
Sorry.
Okay. You can tell the story while I try to figure out how to get those.
Welcome to the table. If you could state your name for the record?
Jonathan Halli with Warren Street Architects.
All right, tell us what's happening with this.
This is a very long story, and I'm gonna make it very short.
Oh, bless you.
This project started almost two years ago. It was to be funded in February of 2022. That funding, the project didn't come together, and they basically missed their window, so it skipped. That funding was all through NEFA. When that funding fell apart, that's when we went to Planning Board and we made the assertions that we weren't touching the outside of the building. Everything was to stay the same. All the renovations were on the inside. We were converting what was a three-family main house and the two apartments in the garage to eight apartments. And that was our intent. The financing fell apart. The drawings were complete. They applied for additional funding in 2023 that had HUD money involved. I wasn't aware of this, but when they went through that whole HUD process, they had to do an environmental, which included lead paint. They did that, they did that study, and it came back that there was lead paint everywhere because of the date of the building. The project was, in the meantime, the coalition bought the building. So our drawings have been done for over a year, and they were negotiating with a contractor to do the work. What happened here in the interim, and again unbeknownst to us in the office, the civil engineering company that, environmental company that did that study for them decided that they were gonna do the abatement as well. And if you can believe this, this God honest truth, left to their own devices, the contractor, so the contractor gave back the credit for handling all the abatement in the demo, and the civil engineering firm took it on, and they hired the environmental abatement demo contractor to come in, and in two days, they gutted these buildings down to the studs. Gone. Everything. The only thing standing, literally, is the wall studs and the one-byboards on the outside. Everything on the inside, the electrical, the plumbing, it's all gone. I happened to drive by and kinda scratched my head and called Greg, and I said, "What are you doing?" And so he made some phone calls. We met on site, and, long story short, this project is now, because they haven't closed with NEFA, they have between a $250,000 and $400,000 gap to put the project back to where it was supposed to be. The conditions that were supposed to stay now have to be put back. So we got a bit of a dilemma.
Ugh, I'd say so.
Again, in the interim, the coalition was trying to handle, I'm doing this pro bono, so he's trying to mitigate in conversations with the city, and had some conversations while this was ongoing and before the abatement, or actually while the abatement had basically torn the house apart, we asked the contractor to start trying, putting some numbers together, and one of the issues was they were in the middle of tearing the front porch off. So Greg made a call to Heather and said, "Can you come out and look at this? We want to take the front porch off." And in her defense, she came out and looked at it and said, "We'd been through DHR. They classified the building as not having any historical significance, the whole bit." And Heather said, "Yeah, I think we can manage that, but you gotta go to ADR and explain you're taking the porch off." The bizarre thing is that everything that transpired left us...
Sure. Need to log in too.
So the intent, let me go back. The intent was that the building was, the exterior envelope of the building, vinyl siding, shutters, the windows, that was all stained. The intent was that the house was gonna look like it did before. It's all gone. Not your problem, but the issue is the coalition's got their back up against the wall. Their closing on their financing expires mid-July. If they can't figure out how to bridge that gap, they're gonna lose their financing. They now own a building that has been gutted down to nothing. So we're in a bit of a panic with the contractor to figure out how we can come up with a number, and there is mediation, litigation, something's gonna happen with regards to the environmental company just basic, basically running amok. So...
So there's no more lead paint?
On the inside.
Or outside. Or outside. There's pieces on the outside.
I'm just gonna run down this here. So what I'm looking at here is the carriage house. Now, this is the back of the main house. This is the carriage house as it existed before the demo. This is the east elevation. One door led to a stairway to an apartment upstairs, and there was an apartment downstairs. This is the west elevation of the main house. Again, windows, there was no shutters on that, just, you can see what it was. West end.
So I have a question. When I was comparing the two, the proposed to the photographs, it seemed like there were windows missing, windows in different places.
No, it's just simply that the grills weren't drawn on the windows and the shutters weren't there because honestly, the assertion was they were all going back. Like it was, it was going to be there.
I think it's right on the front facade where there's three windows on the existing building and only two windows, I think, on the middle portion. I'll see if I can find it more specific.
It's the portion with that piece that juts out off the front. There's three windows underneath that little addition.
The proposal only has two.
And your proposal shows the addition gone and two windows.
So let me just share with you, you can only imagine. The building's been stripped down to the existing studs. All right? Now we know everything that we didn't know before.
Been worse.
So we're bound to bring the building back to code. So if you can imagine, every stick of wood, both vertically and horizontally, has to be sistered. They're basically rebuilding the building. So we've had conversation, I had a conversation with Heather a day or two ago, about raising the barn and building it new. The problem with that is it throws us into a major site plan application, which will take us three months to get through, which is beyond their funding deadline. So that's not an option. So 30 seconds after I got off the phone with Heather, I called the contractor, I called Greg, and that's off the table. We're gonna renovate it. But they're basically gonna sister every piece of lumber in the building to bring it up to code. We also have to pour footings on the inside of the basements and put stainless steel rods from, to basically anchor the building to granite... to granite rubble foundations. It's, it's all of this, how to bring it up to code. So we've got this, you, I mean, it's not your problem, but.
So, Mr. Chairman, if I could, I have a question because I'm looking at the plans you submit. And I'm a little confused because I'm seeing two south elevations that are completely different. You're saying, I mean, I'm seeing plans from five, dated five thirteen fifteen that show that porch always gone on this elevation.
You, I don't have it. Is it on here?
Can I clarify? I had, I had a similar confusion and maybe Jonathan can clarify because there's a question. So in the, in the proposal, there's tho, the proposed elevations, there are two sets.
Yeah.
One set has that protrusion on the front and the other set doesn't. And that's the only difference between the two sets.
Right. But one is dated five thirteen, two thousand fifteen and it, and I'm understanding it, which is recently it was decided to take the porch off.
That's, that's got to be a mistake if that's the case.
I'm just talking about that big case.
No, I understand the overhang. I saw that. And that's where there's the difference in the windows and whatnot.
Yeah. So.
So if you go to the south one, it's probably the easiest to kind of look like. So this one is gone.
So, yes. So if, if you can imagine that dormer that's there now is literally lick and stick to the side of the building. It's not structurally cantilevered off. It's literally nailed to the building.
Lick and stick.
A lick and stick.
I don't remember that one.
So they asked us to look at what we could do if we just took that, just drop it off. It literally would take two slabs of a hammer and it'll, it'll come down. It, so that was an option, that, that elevation. So if you look at the, I think it's drawn twice here and one has it, that, that elevation there.
Right. And what I guess.
That's what exists today.
Right. I understand that, but I'm also trying to understand why on this drawing, porch is gone and it's dated five fifteen.
Yeah, that's got to be.
You're telling us that.
Two thousand, yeah, two thousand fifteen. That's got to be a mistake. Five thirteen fifteen.
It's just a mistake. It's a wrong date.
Four different plans, so.
But there's a window.
There is a window on, on, so on, just so we're on the same page. So sheet four of six, which is what I'm looking at. This also reflects the porch coming off the main house.
Can I just go up there?
Yeah.
So I just want to, so on the exist, if you look at the photographs, there's a window right here.
Uh huh.
Where'd it go?
Yeah, there's three windows underneath that little cantilever.
Go throw all the way down in the packet, I think is where the existing photos are.
It doesn't have one right from the front, though.
If you look at the photographs, it's in there.
Yeah.
I can't tell you.
Yeah. So in the existing photos, if you look at the, in your packet, if you look at existing photos, the first one, one of four, shows the three windows.
That the existing?
With half a shutter under one of them. So I guess, I guess we could sit and talk about this all day long and how the, the pieces are. I'm, I'm very, I'm, I'm.
So, can I just say, so this is the dilemma. The, the intent would be to put this back with vinyl siding as, as cost effectively as we can. And typically this would have, if we were starting fresh, would have aluminum wrapped fascia and soffit and aluminum corner boards if they weren't plastic vinyl. The issue here is that everything that came down, the, the discussion with the abatement company is that anything that had lead on it had to go away. And that's not the case. There's no child that's going to chew on the fascia of the building, you know, two stories out. That's not going to happen. It's all gone. So the existing dental work, the chrome molding, the, the more detailed fascia that was there is tens of thousands of dollars to put back in today's market. That's not what we're looking to do. What we're trying to do at this point is restore that as best as we can. There will be grills in the windows and there will be shutters on the front of the building to match what was there. Where there were shutters, there will be shutters. But other than that, we're, we're talking about replacing it in, in what would be new construction standards today.
Yeah. Go ahead. So one of the questions, one of the concerns from Mr. Makris who submitted the letter was not keeping in the nature of the neighborhood, right? The architecture of the neighborhood. So will this fundamentally change it so it will stand out in the neighborhood? Or will it still?
It's going to be white siding. It was white siding before. It's going to be white siding again. It's going to be white windows. It's going to be, was white windows. It's going to be white again. It's going to have new, new shutters to match what was there. It's going to have new asphalt shingles. It was asphalt, thirty-five-year-old asphalt shingles before. So it's not changing the, the, the character or.
Well, it changes the character without the farmer's porch and without the dental molding and without the cupola. Why the cupola? What happened to the cupola? Did I miss that?
It was rotten. It was completely rotten.
So I, I'm very sensitive to that because we took testimony on that when they came in before that, you know, they, they, you know, the outside of the building was going to stay the same. Amanda?
So just to clarify, and I think that this, because of what renderings we're seeing today does not have shutters. However, you mentioned there, there will be shutters being put back on. So if, should we, when we get to the point, we just need to clarify that, that the shutters will be matching what was there before because they're not showing on today's renderings. And, and I, to be honest with you, it, I think that that was one of the complaints, that it's losing that character without the shutters. However, if it's, if it's under, you know, the, the conditions that shutters would be placed back on the building, you know, I just wanted to clarify.
So if I can just speak to the porch. So given the option of tearing the porch off when the contractor came to us and said, you know, it's twenty thousand, twenty-five thousand dollars to put it back, we take it down, we don't deal with it, we make it look more like a colonial, the coalition's response was, phew, because their clientele are going to sit on that porch, hoard everything that they have, pile it on that porch, they're going to smoke on the porch and watch everybody go out on Pleasant Street. And that's just, it's, it took off the table, an issue that they had about how to manage the clientele that could potentially be living.
That's a good spin. That's a good spin. That's very, very well done. And again, it just, I, you know, anything, anything we could do on the.
I will tell you that I took this through NADIN through Division of Historic Resources. We did the whole report, the study. It came back with no historical significance. There's, there's no covenants, no easements, no anything on the.
No, I get it. It's just a, it's, it's another house that's going to end up looking just cookie cutter. But that's, you're doing it for the right reasons. I get that.
I think we should just, I would like, just some clarification. I mean, aside from the shutters and the lintels and the cupola, there are other changes related to where, to like that window. Like where did that window go? Is that window coming back? There's also this, on the east elevation, can I approach?
Yep.
To just show.
Which one?
Right here. This is a, in the existing condition, which I want to bring up. This is a lovely, has a lovely little architectural feature that, I'm not sure what it is, but it looks like a window and I don't know what happened to it. But what you, what, which one is it? Right here. Right here. Do you see this?
Yeah.
There's a really lovely little thing there.
Little eyebrow.
I'm sure there may be others, but are those features coming back or are they, are they?
If the board wants it to come back, it can come back. It's gone.
I think the board should just get to, not that we have time, but there are a lot to go over here. Terms of the changes that are being made.
And I get the lintels and, I mean, I'm, I'm at, you know, it just is a completely different look to the building and I get the dental molding and I get the cost to put that all back in. The, the pieces around the window, the lintel treatment around the window, you said ten thousand doll, what was the, did you throw a number back out on, on restoring that to include?
I just said, no, to put all the wood trim back is tens of thousands of dollars.
Can I make a reference?
Carol, yeah, hang on a second. Carol?
The photographs show chimneys, which the renderings do not. Are the chimneys still there?
No, they're gone.
Oh, my goodness.
The chimneys are gone?
Yeah.
Was there lead in the chimneys?
There was asbestos. They were covered and wrapped in asbestos. It all, they're all gone. I mean, I can put a chimney back on, on the roof if it's an aesthetic thing that you want to see, but they're gone.
Can I make a reference?
Yeah, go ahead.
My recommend, I, I would make a recommendation because ADR was not aware of any of this and didn't go over any of this. I would suggest sending it back to ADR so that they can have these conversations with Jonathan or whoever and hammer out what's going to go, what's going to stay, what are we okay with, and come back to the board with.
What does that do to your?
I can tell you that it will be financially devastating to the coalition.
Special meeting in two weeks.
I mean, what, what's your time? Like could, if they approved the porch, but to come back for all these other things that you're not actually going to do until the end because they're fascia type things?
So they're scheduled to close mid-July. That's when the funding cycle that they're approved for runs out.
So just so I'm clear, they're scheduled to close for the construction piece of it. They already own the building.
They already own the building. Yeah. I mean, what they own now is just a shell.
Yeah, they're, they're.
I mean, how can they close with liens and everything else if there's lawsuits?
There's no liens. There's no lawsuits.
But you just said there was financial issues because of the contractor and stuff.
Not yet. There is, there is, there is pending mitigation, mediation to deal with. The environmental company all but admitted that.
They went crazy.
They ju, they went too far.
Okay. Any, yes.
I have a question. When is the next ADR meeting?
Next month. Not till middle.
No, but when?
July.
It's like July.
July fifth.
Fifth, yeah.
July fifth. And so if they're closing July, mid-July, we've got time?
Well, no, they'd have to still come back to us, which our next meeting is the nineteenth.
I mean, you could.
We could give some power to ADR and allow them to, allow them to, and allow them to, hammer out, hammer out the details. I'm comfortable with that because I'm, I'm, I'm very sensitive to the fact that you, you're in a tough situation.
Nineteen is too late.
The coalition's in a tough situation. They're doing great work. I want to help them if we can. But I'm also sensitive to the neighbors who are saying, hey, don't, don't do this. You told us we weren't going to make any changes. Look at this thing. I mean, it's nothing. And I, and I get why. I'm just saying from a, if I was a neighbor sitting across the street, I'd be, I'd be pouting at.
I would, I would ask this board to simply talk through the issues. If you want chimneys, we'll build the chimneys. I need to get an approval tonight to move this forward.
Yeah.
Or the coalition is going to lose their financing.
Yeah.
They're going to have to carry this building for a year or two until they can, they can figure this out. There's other things that will probably happen. You know, if you want the arched window to go back where the kitchen is on that particular apartment, the window can go back. I mean, if we're talking about a couple of tens of thousands of dollars to put some elements back, at this point, I'd, I'd rather the board say, that's something we can't live without.
Yeah. So I mean, at, at some point, the damage has been done. So at, at that point, you know, we're not here to say you got to put it back to exactly what it was, although we probably would if, if we had, we had our druthers. Any suggestions? Matt, you look like you got a suggestion.
No.
No. David?
Just a quick, when you discussed the July fifth meeting.
Pull up a little bit.
When you discussed the July fifth meeting of the ADR, right? You can empower them to.
Well, we could, we could give him an approval pending, pending architectural design review and their feedback.
Well, that seems to be the course, the only course available to us at this point.
Does waiting till July fifth push you over the edge?
I, I know it's before they're closing. I don't know how that, what the results that come out of ADR and then getting it priced and then getting it into, there's a, there's a lot of pieces and parts here that I'm not privy to.
So if we talk through it and look at it and say, windows are going back, grills are going back, shutters are going back.
Those are all things that are included already.
Lentils, I, I, I think there needs to be lentils on the building. So I don't particularly need them to be PVC or wood lentils, but I, I, I think they architecturally add a significant amount to the building. So I'd like to see those go back on. The little eyebrow window or half moon window. And, you know, with cupola, we'll punt on that. I don't think you're going to be able to, to do anything there. The building, you said the outbuilding is going to stay and renovate?
They have to renovate.
So they renovate that. Any, David?
Then if you take that, if you take that path.
Yeah.
What happens, how does ADR respond?
They don't. No, they're not going to, they wouldn't, they're done. They're not in the situation at the, because they're going to do the same thing on July fifth and say, do this, do this, do this, do this. Teresa?
Well, I was just saying, I do think ADR at least should be consulted at, at me because this is, I mean, it's a huge change and that's kind of the gatehouse to that neighborhood and that street. Have some great house, great old historic houses owned there. And, you know, I'm not so sure I totally agree with you on the cupola because it seems to me, you know.
Be great, yeah.
Yeah. And I, you know, and I don't really know, I mean, I think it needs a fireplace. I said, what, I hate to, well, I'm not going to tell you what I think this looks like because there's some houses that were torn down on a very prominent property a while back that I don't know how it got approval. And they've got what I call cookie cutter siding.
Yep.
Yucky houses. But, you know, I, I think Chris Makris has a point. And my take is we should go in and say, at least these things we need.
Well, that's what I was just doing.
And then go to ADR. And if ADR says, okay, you know, we also, you forgot about this, that. I mean, you know, I think the Coalition of Homeless does a great job. Shame on them for not being on top of what was going on. Those of us who drive by there every day going, what is going on? And it's just, you know, it started and it got a little worse and got worse. And the next thing you know, there's just, there's nothing. And so how anybody was so asleep at the wheel, particularly when they knew they've got financing. And I certainly, I don't know who they're looking at for financing or the bank, but it seems to me they should be having a conversation with them as well. I'm uncomfortable with this not going back to what the neighborhood and everybody thought it was going to look like.
Yeah.
And, you know, I, I hate to say homeless versus money for aesthetics, but, but I think we have to be respectful for the people who live there and have done a great job in that, that neighborhood. And it's a gateway. So I would almost say most, almost all of Mr. Makris' conditions need to go back and it goes to ADR. And they say, okay, and then you got it. I hate to be hard-nosed about it, but I just can't figure out how all this was going on and nobody was on top of it.
I can't explain that either.
I know you can't. And I'm not saying you.
I'm just here to plead with the board to put whatever conditions you want on this and allow us to move forward. I'm happy to talk through it, all of it.
Yep.
I mean, I'm happy to put the chimneys back. I'm happy to put the cupola back. I'm happy to do anything I can to keep this on track. I can't state this any louder. It will be financially devastating to the coalition if they lose their financing.
Right.
And consideration to this so devastating and you, if anyone is driven by it today.
It's awful.
And see it.
It's awful.
It will not change.
Yeah, for two years.
It will, it will sit like that and it will only get worse. So I, I, I hear Jonathan what you're saying. And I think that it, we should at least discuss what is, I, I totally, I hear both sides, but I just wanted to point out to the, everyone else that it will not change from what it looks like today if it gets stopped.
Understood. Yeah.
With us.
Jeff?
So I don't like the new look with the shutters gone and the lintels.
No, the shutters aren't gone.
No, but on the picture, I'm just saying. It looks very institutional on the pictures that you had. I would say I'd like to see the chimneys go back because I think that kind of gives you that feel of an old colonial. I would like to see the shutters go back with the lintels with the different colors. So not, everything's white and then you suddenly have the shutters. The window on the back, I think, is unique features. You look at a couple of houses on that street, a couple of the houses actually have some curved windows in different facings. So it kind of seems like it's one of those neighborhoods that had a style. And the cupola really just, really, you understand that's the old barn-type carriage house look. Those would be, I'm not thrilled with the porch gone, but I understand that's probably way overarching. And I understand kind of their thought process. I'd like to see also that third window go back in on that south face when that overhanging unit is taken out. Those would be where I would kind of land if I had to make a decision.
Okay. Other items? Anybody else want to, I mean, again, I think the porch, we talked about the porch maybe is a plus, but I'm okay with the porch, the lintels over the windows. Anybody wedded to wide corner boards? Again, I, it's an architectural detail that adds to it, but I don't know that it adds enough, enough to it. Yeah.
And I, I, oh, sorry, I had to say that, like, the similarities to, to be similar, when I, I don't think we should be asking them to do an original, you know.
Period look.
You know, has to be the materials of wood character.
Right. Yeah, yeah.
But make the similarities, if it is vinyl, PVC, whatever it may be, that if it's an alternative material, I don't think. I don't think that we need to stamp on there that it needs to be, um, original material.
No, 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 I agree, yeah. Carol?
I'm a little confused as to whether the overhang that's hanging by a thread is staying or going. That's going. But it was on a rendering, so that's why I'm confused.
They would like it to go because it's, it basically has to be completely rebuilt.
I don't have a problem with that, but I agree that that third window that's evaporated needs to re-materialize.
Okay, um, so again, I, I think, you know, I'm reluctant to do it, but I, I think we could make a motion to approve. Uh, well, wait a minute, let's.
You need to make a list.
Yeah, I know. I, I know, I know. Well, I'm gonna say with the conditions, but we. Just a second. Help me out here together, so.
This is a concern.
Six J.
We don't have a report.
So there's no report or anything we need to do.
I think you've all done a good job of listing the items that you wanna see.
Right, so again, just if we go back through them, lentils over the windows and doors, shutters on the windows, cupola, chimneys.
That overhang gone, which I think he said is.
The third, the third window on the front, the, the, uh, round top window in the back.
The detail of over that, yeah, yeah.
What else?
The chimneys.
Chimneys, I said.
Oh, yeah, I'm sorry, I missed that. I was thinking of the side.
It's adding up. I know it's adding up. And I get it, but I think that's the only way we're gonna approve it and then not push you back to ADR. I, 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 I'm okay with not pushing it back to ADR. And I know there's some consternation about that. I'm sensitive to that. But I'm gonna make a motion to approve it with those conditions that I just laid out. Do I have to do anything else since there's no report? I need a second. I know, I know that piece of it. I'm just saying, since there's no report, I'm very process driven. I, I look at the report.
I think it's good.
So, so make a motion to approve it with those, with those details back in. Carol?
Do we need to say anything about the style of the cupola or anything other than, be a little more specific than a cupola?
A cupola similar to what was there? Similar, not on eight. I mean, I get it, oh, jeez.
Is it possible to have that, we approve it with a cupola going back? And then once they get through the financing and whatnot, they come back to get the actual style of the cupola back through ADR?
Forty thousand dollar cupola.
I don't know. I'm just trying, I'm just trying to ask if there's leeway in that or not, or if that just causes more hassle later on.
You can make whatever motion that you want. It's.
Yeah, so if we, if we approve it, which means they'd be able to get their financing and get everything squared away with the condition that they come back in for a review of a cupola drawing. At a later, at a later date before COs are issued.
Can I just suggest that we do something similar in size and mass and.
Yeah.
And call it at that? I mean.
Similar size and mass, yeah.
Similar size and mass.
Shape and style.
And shape.
Size and mass cover shape, doesn't it?
I could do a round one and it's the same mass.
You know what we're, I mean shuttered.
I can replace something that, I mean, that's a ten thousand dollar cupola.
Anyways, probably more than that.
Yeah, so we, we do something.
You probably already shingled over it, right?
You know, it's probably sixty inches, six feet square. It's bigger than you think.
Yeah. Okay, so similar.
Has a similar look.
Similar in size and mass with a similar appeal. Similar street appeal. I don't care how it looks close up. It's a good hundred footer. Heather?
I suggest that you include a condition that they submit the design to staff.
Okay with that? Submit the design to staff after approval.
Yeah, can I just suggest that as we look at this elevation here, there's trim and the, the lentils over the windows on the main house. There's none of that on the carriage house.
That's fine.
We're matching what was there.
There for that, right. Carriage house stays as it is for siding with just shutters.
Yeah.
The house has the lentils with the frame around the windows of a different color.
Yeah.
I'm just gonna go on, on that.
On that.
Replace it in kind.
Good with that? So we got a motion on the table, hasn't changed. Anybody wanna second that motion?
Second.
Further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you, everybody.
Good luck. You're doing, you're doing good work. I'm sure you're glad you got yourself into it, but.
Yeah.
All right, well, that brings us through our, our, our quick designer review applications by consent section. Moves us on, moves us on to the public hearing section for the night. Let's read item seven A into the record if we could.
River Bend Community Mental Health requests minor subdivision approval for a lot line adjustment between three North State Street and forty Pleasant Street in the Central Business Performance District. Staff recommends this be determined complete, not a development of regional impact, and to open the public hearing.
Okay, we'll open the public hearing, welcome the applicant if they wanna come up.
Do you wanna vote on the determination?
We can do that, yeah. We can vote on the determination of completeness. So staff has found that the application is complete, not a development of regional impact. Would someone like to make a motion to find the application complete and open the public hearing?
So moved.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Can I, before, before we go into, I don't know if this is necessary. This was already approved two years ago or something. They just, they, we, they didn't realize, we didn't realize the plaque had not been recorded. So this is really just a renewal. I don't know if you wanna go into all the details of it or if you just wanted to say, yes, we approved because this was literally already approved as is last year.
I think that's a great idea.
It was during the, it was in twenty twenty. It was the pandemic when.
Okay, so it's, the only reason it's back before is just because it's expired.
Yes.
Anything changed, Scott? Not a thing? Any, anybody have any questions? No? We'll sit you back down. Thanks for waiting. Okay, would someone like to make a, well, sorry. Let me look at this quick. Okay, so grant the following condition, request for waivers from the subdivision regulations which are outlined in your packet in two point two. Grant minor subdivision approval in two point three with, uh, no conditions, but what are those conditions? One through eight, are those?
Correct.
Conditions of approval? Okay, would someone like to, can we take it all in one shot?
No.
Someone like to make a motion to grant the waivers as outlined in two point two of your packet?
So moved.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries and grant, uh, two point three is to grant minor subdivision approval for the lot line adjustment at three North State Street and forty Pleasant Street, subject to the following precedent conditions, and those are outlined in precedent conditions one through eight. Would someone like to make a motion to grant that minor subdivision approval as outlined?
So moved.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries.
So for the record, I would suggest for the record that you do state what your findings of fact.
Findings of fact? Oh, I'm sorry.
It's okay. Just keeping you honest.
Findings of fact. I forgot my findings of fact. Things of fact, where is it?
It was two point one.
It's two point one. It's on the report.
For the record, staff recommends the board discuss and determine the findings of fact, which may include information provided in staff reports and applicants subs- applicants submission materials, testimony provided during the public hearing and/or other documents or materials provided in the public hearing based on the findings of fact adopted. Staff recommends that the board make the motions outlined below, and those were done under two point two and two point three, and I apologize for not reading that on record. Make sure I do it next time.
No, that's okay, but are the, so we recommended you discuss and determine, so I think you, a definitive.
A definitive, yes, we discussed, we discussed and determined, and those are the findings of fact.
All right, excellent. Thank you for the record.
Ah, my gosh. Thank you, keep me honest. Scream X, seven B into the record if we could.
TF Bernier on behalf of Thomas and Carrie Murphy and David and Cynthia Karen requests minor subdivision approval for a lot line adjustment to transfer two acres from one eighteen to one ten Peaceful Lane in the Open Space Residential District. Uh, I will just mention that seven B and seven C are very substantially similar, same property, transferring, uh, property to adjacent to the butters. This one, staff recommends the application, both of them, staff recommends the application be determined complete, not developments of regional impact, and to open the public hearing.
Okay, so we have a determination completeness component. Staff found the application complete. Would someone like to make a motion to find the application complete and open the public hearing? I move.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries. Public hearing is open. Let's get a quick staff update on this. If the applicant wants to come up, come on up.
Sure.
Seventeen Peaceful Lane.
Yeah. Yeah, there's, there's not much to it. It's just a lot line adjustment. We have no issues.
Okay.
Yeah, and if you looked under, I think it was under supplemental, we included, um, an overall map that showed the two different lot line adjustments, just to help you understand what was happening. So our only sort of condition, and I did talk to Tim Bernier about this, was the timing of how they're recorded. That's pretty much our biggest comment is that we have to make sure that it's timed, just because the, whichever one is seconded needs to reflect the new lot configuration after the first one, so we'll work with them on that.
Okay. Any public testimony? Anybody in the audience have any questions or concerns about this application? No? Members of the board? I don't think I closed the public hearing last time. Where were you for that one?
We're too focused on the findings of fact.
All right, so we'll close the public hearing since nobody has any questions or concerns. And I'm gonna read my findings of fact into the record as we speak. Staff recommends the board discuss and determine the findings of fact, which may include information provided in staff reports, the applicant's submission materials, testimony provided during the public hearing and/or other documents or materials provided in the public hearing based on the findings of facts adopted. Staff recommends the board make the motions outlined below. Given the staff reports that we reviewed, uh, make the recommenda- or I'll have someone make a recommendation if you'd like to grant the following waivers that are outlined in section three point two of your packet. Twelve oh eight three, twelve oh seven, twelve oh eight four, twelve oh eight five, twelve oh eight twenty three, B, C, and D, twelve oh eight one. Would someone like to make a motion to grant those waivers?
So moved.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries. Three point three is to grant minor subdivision approval for the lot line adjustment between one ten and one eighteen Peaceful Lane, subject to the following conditions, and that's outlined in conditions one through seven. Would someone like to make a motion to grant that minor subdivision approval as outlined?
So moved.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries. Let's move on to seven C.
Uh, Blanger Land Surveyors on behalf of Thomas and Carrie Murphy and Fuse LLC requests minor subdivision approval for a lot line adjustment to transfer two acres from one eighteen Peaceful Lane to two six five Elm Street in the Open Space Residential District. Staff does recommend the application be determined complete, not a development of regional, oh, wait, was this, is it develop? Some, one of these were on the, um, on the property line with the adjacent municipality. Oh, they, okay, sorry. I'm going crazy.
No, does not mean.
That's the, that's the Elm Street one.
Oh, right, thank you. Um, so not a development of regional impact and to open the public hearing.
Okay, staff's termed the application complete, not a development of regional impact. Would someone like to make a motion to find the application complete and open the public hearing?
So moved.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries. The public hearing is open. Same staff update?
Yeah.
Okay, uh, so any questions from the audience? Questions or concerns? Yes. Come on up. If you could state your name for the record.
Sure, my name is Jacques Blanger. I'm the surveyor that prepared this second, uh, second application. I think you read into the drawing acreage. It's four point two four acres. I think you read two acres.
We'll correct that.
Four point two on, is being transferred?
It's being transferred from twenty two to twenty eight.
We have four, four point two four acres?
Yeah.
That's what we have in our report.
I think she just read it's two point something.
Oh, she might have read.
Says two point O in this, front, front page of it.
We will correct that.
Page one.
Oh, it says it in the agenda item. Okay, no, we have it correct in the report, so it'll be, thank you for that.
All right, well, then that's the same thing.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
But now we have public testimony, so.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions?
No.
No? We'll close the public hearing. Members of the board, any questions or concerns? If not, we will. Read in our findings of fact. Oh, the findings of fact not here?
Oh, yes, they are. Three point one.
Oh, I'm sorry.
You, you, and you can just, just for clarity, you could just say what your findings of fact are.
So the findings of fact are the packets of information, the packet that was provided to us, based on the packet provided to us as a finding of fact. Uh, would someone like to make a motion to grant the following waivers to the subdivision regulations outlined in three point two for section, again, twelve oh eight three, twelve oh seven, twelve oh eight four, twelve oh eight five, twelve oh eight six, twelve oh eight twenty three, B, C, and D? Would someone like to make a motion to grant those following waivers?
So moved.
Motion has been made and seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries. Three point three is to grant minor subdivision approval for the lot line adjustment between one ten and one eighteen Peaceful Lane. And those are out in, with the, um, conditions outlined in one through seven. Would someone like to make a motion to grant that minor subdivision approval as outlined?
So moved.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. All those in favor?
Okay.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries. We didn't ask for any discussion because I knew you weren't gonna have any. All right. Those are both all set. Thank you very much. Let's move on to seven D in our agenda if we could.
TF Moran on behalf of Interchange Development requests conditional use permit approval for construction of a new wireless telecommunications facility at twenty three Interchange Drive in the Industrial District. Um, staff does recommend the application be determined complete. Uh, it is a development of regional impact and notification has been done by the applicant, uh, and we recommend to open the public hearing. Uh, we also have a staff update on this one.
Okay, great. Determination of completeness. Um, so we have a, we have found the application complete. It is a development of regional impact. Would someone like to make a motion to find the application complete, a development of regional impact, and open the public hearing?
So moved.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries. The public hearing is open. Uh, we'll welcome you guys up to the table and we'll get a staff update if we could.
Sure, so this is, we pulled this out from the other application. They had applied for the, um, the major site plan and, um, this conditional use permit. But, um, they wanna get going on this wireless telecommunications facility, um, so we're treating this as a separate application. But in reviewing the, um, information that was submitted, they submitted a report from the RF engineer who I think they have here tonight. And the last time we did one of these was at St. Paul School in two thousand and ten. Um, so I was looking through that application just to see the information that planning board had requested and what we had looked at. This is a little bit different. It's located next to the smokestack of the, um, wheel operator facility and it's in more of an industrial area than St. Paul School, so it, um, staff is not recommending a more robust visual assessment that was provided previously for the St. Paul School one, because I think what they submitted, um, perfectly illustrates how it's gonna look. But, um, just wanted to put it out there for the board to determine, at that time, city staff had recommended that they hire a third-party consultant to review the, um, the engineering report. Staff does not have the expertise to determine if what they presented is correct. So we had, um, had a third-party engineer review what was submitted then, and it pretty much just made recommendations for a monopole and just, um, referred to whether the height was sufficient or if it needed to be, if it could be shorter or what the needs were for coverage in that area. So I think, I just wanted to put it out to the board, if you felt, if you feel comfortable with what was presented and what he's gonna present to you tonight, if you want a third-party assessment, looking at that report that was done in two thousand and ten, pretty much that third-party consultant just agreed with everything that was submitted. So it wasn't additional information. It just sort of pointed to, hey, do a monopole. The height is fine. There was some information about need at Concord Hospital that was followed up on. But just for your determination, staff doesn't really have a recommendation either way. Um, they do have to go back for architectural design review, so it won't be a vote tonight. You'll have to vote next month for approval, but just because of, they're required to go to ADR for this and we were waiting.
For color and shutters and architectural details?
For lentils and.
Visual, visual effects.
Visual effects.
Welcome to the table. If you could state your names for the record.
Laurie Roscio with Interchange Development.
David Roscio, Interchange Development.
Martin Lavins, C Squared Systems.
We haven't seen you guys in a while. Welcome back.
Can I just request that you sign in?
Done.
Oh, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
We, we've been having trouble lately with knowing who we're talking to.
All right, well.
In the business.
Tell us a wee bit about this if you can and see if we can help move on.
Thank you. Appreciate your time, chairman, board, and staff, and new engineers. Appreciate that. So I'm David Roscio. Um, we brought up on the, the screen here a layout of the development that likely the board members and the staff is familiar with. So this is the forty-three acre tract, uh, at the intersection of Route four, Hoyt Road and, and Whitney Road. And you could see the.
We got a pointer. There you go. He brought his own, huh? Got it, smart man.
Thank you, though. I appreciate your offering.
If you can, if you can hold it without shaking it, you're gonna be duly impressed and not hit Alex in the face.
I, I'd really prefer just to stand up there, but they tell me I should have a microphone on me. So there's the market basket. There's home goods.
Nice, steady hand, too.
Thank you. I'm just, this is the extra mart, Wendy's. Oh, four to eight merchants away right there in the liquor store. So this is the line which is, separates, uh, GWP District from the Industrial. So this is the line which is, separates GWP District from the Industrial District. This is the wheeler brader facility here. So this is all the industrially zoned portion of our development. So here is a surface pond which satisfies the needs of the market basket, home goods, the parking lot in front of it. That all drains into this area here. It's also been sized adequately to take care of the impervious surfaces anticipated when we enveloped this portion of the property. This part here is the proposed cell tower site. And I'm sure if you guys remember, but we, the CDP in the past has shown, the, well, I was like, CDP in the past has shown the, go down, roll up just a little bit. Yeah. You're almost there. Give us, there you go, perfect.
Oh, okay, sorry.
CDP in the past has shown there's a, a portion back here where we wanted to put the cell tower. But we decided to relocate it to a more remote portion of the site, sort of deep into the industrial. This is as far south as we can go and stay within the bluff and buffer setbacks as well as the well and setbacks. So there's a, a proposed, it's actually already exists, there's a sort of a haul road here that our site contractors have been using. So that's a gravel drive which will go back to this fenced-in area. Maybe we should zoom in on that neighborhood so I can show you what's up. This is Interchange Drive. And that gravel air, drive would go back to this fenced-in area here. There is so, a space for propane tanks if we want them, that might provide generation power for these co-tenants. We have five of these boxes set out for the co-tenants. So there's currently five folks that would be possible tenants on this tower. So that, these are sort of dimensions off of the, the tower location. The city has a regulation where the height of the tower now becomes the setback to property bounds. And we're proposing a 185-foot tall tower with a six-foot lightning protection on top of that. And the, the height of that tower plus the lightning protection falls well within the setbacks to property bounds. Kind of covered there. So we covered the, the location on the site. As far as a distance to residence, I know that was a, a question that was, that came up in one of the questionnaires, and I calculated it's, it's about .34 miles or 1,800 feet to residence on the east side of the interstate highway, which would be Pinecrest Circle, 1,800 feet to the north, which would be the Shoestring Road residence, just on the north side of Route 4. About 1,800 feet to the west, to the residences on Hannah Dustin Drive. And about 7,200 feet or 1.36 miles to residences to the south, which is Nickerson Drive, which is on the west side of the Merrimack River. And at this point, with respect to the location of the tower and where it's situated on the site, I think that's, is that clear enough to folks to understand where it's at?
Yep.
Okay. As far as the design goes, there is a sketch. Proterra Design Group has created an elevation view and a plan view for us. So that elevation view shows the, the height of the tower at 185, total with the lightning rod protection at 191. And that leaves the room for those five tenants to the arrays at the very top. Now I'd like to turn it over to Martin Levin, who's a senior RF engineer for C Squared Systems out of Auburn, New Hampshire.
Martin Levin, C Squared.
Let's pull that a little closer to you.
Oh, sorry.
Yeah, there you go, that's good, that's good.
This report was produced on behalf of Interchange Development to assess the impact of having a, the monopole tower at this location. We looked at coverage and by different categories. If you can see the existing coverage. Based on the placement of towers around this area, yeah, there's a, an area certainly of weaker coverage. We're just about halfway between the two adjacent sites on I-93 and through this area in terms of coverage at a in-vehicle level, in-building level. Yeah, there is significant weakness in that area. The gray is more of an outdoor level. But in terms of an area like this that's being built up and developed pretty intensely, the carriers will try to get more coverage in that area to cover into buildings and into vehicles. This is what we currently have. You can see the distances. We've got one on Lock Road going down the road and one up to the north there, which I think is actually off these plots. On distance, actually, no, that's the Robin Street one, excuse me. So, based on those known tower locations, we can pretty much see how our new tower will impact in the next slide. You can see the, the coverage levels. We've got a lot of green in there, which is in, we consider in-building coverage or very, very good coverage. Our adequate coverage to in-vehicle coverage, depending on how you look at it, is also greatly extended in this area. So it seems to be very well placed in terms of distances to the other sites around it. And getting proximity to 93 is very good, and it fills in on that valley. If you look at the terrain plot, you can see we're in a, a valley. Couple plots down. You can see we're in a valley, the, the bluish to purple is a low elevation running along the river there. So this will cover, this is now in a high spot, it's going to be seen from a long way away, and it will cover well up and down in that low terrain area. And the next slide gives our coverage counseling comparisons. If we look at the height analysis, actually, if we take a peek at the plots really quickly, it often doesn't look like there's that much difference between heights until you look at it in terms of percentage of coverage. If you, yeah, if you lose, that is 700, yes. If you lose a little coverage all around the fringe, it doesn't look like much until you add it all up. And, you know, just going from 180 down to 160, we lose about 7% of our population and, you know, 13% of our area, which, to look at the plot, it never looks like it's that much. But when you compare the areas themselves visually, it doesn't seem like much, but you can see there's a pretty substantial loss there, just in like 24.
That's going from 180 to 170, or 186 to?
To 180 to 160.
160.
Yeah. So we're losing anywhere from 7.5%, 4%, 13% of area, and 8% of our roadway coverage. If we were to drop from 80, 180 to 140, for instance, we'd lose almost 29% of our population coverage, 26% of our area coverage, and about 15% of our roadway coverage, so.
And, and David, I think you said it before, but what's the height of the wheeler brader chimney?
Oh, I didn't mention that. Right, it's 235 feet.
Okay.
That's located approximately 500 feet, I believe.
Away?
West.
West.
Yeah.
As options go, active smokestacks can be, I mean, I haven't looked into this personally, and I'm not the, the real estate agent, but from the carrier standpoint and from the landlord standpoint, it's often a difficult situation to be on an active smokestack. In previous companies I've worked with, we've had, it's always, they're so tempting to, to say that that would be a great idea.
Put it right on there, yeah.
But in terms of safety, in terms of the atmosphere, in terms of sometimes corrosive atmosphere that ends up around that, the heat involved, for both parties involved, it often turns out to be something that neither one wants to get involved with.
Okay, I was going to ask that, so thank you. Plus, it's not yours, so. Okay. Questions? Jeff?
I have two. One is, you know, I see you have a ground mount transformer, and you might have been in this board over the last few months, and we keep peeling ground mount transformers, they're a year or two out. What's your contingency if you can't get Unitil to provide a ground mount transformer?
Uh, we'll wait. They're, they're rebuilding them now, and the, the lead times for rebuilt transformers are quite a bit less in timing. What we've done in the past anyway is when we've needed a ground mount transformer, we've identified it as early as possible, sent the engineers our information, filled out the forms as best we could. And they said, well, you know, we have a few on order, we'll just reserve this for you. So the 18-month delivery time sometimes just becomes eight months or so, because we're essentially identifying one that's already on their way.
I just, I just, I bring that up just because we keep running into it, and people have to come back for waivers later, so I thought I'd ask. The second is, what color is it going to be?
Galvanized steel.
So there's no way to colorize it so it blends in a little bit more, or do they find?
That is the blending color, right. The idea is we'd like to try to have it look like the sky. And that silvery grayish color is the best one for it.
Kind of like white planes, or painted, the Air Force planes are painted kind of grayish, they blend in?
That's the point.
Thank you, that's all I had.
Thank you.
Just to, so that was the recommendation for the St. Paul School one, is to paint it the color that they're painting it, so.
There's very little maintenance on the galvanized structure as well.
Yeah, yep.
There's a couple guys up on Fisherville Road that could use some advice on ground lot transfers, just. Sorry, that's inside, inside joke for the.
Give me a call, that's fine.
Well, we've learned that there's a new, there's a new planning process. You order the transformer.
And then you build, and then you build the project around it. Touche, touche.
Even if it's a little oversized.
Other questions, other questions from the board? Do you remember the audience have any questions or concerns about this application?
Nope.
Okay, we'll close the public hearing and look to our report. Thank you very much for your testimony.
Thank you.
So again.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
We did receive an email, it was from their butter at 6 Whitney Road, in support of the project, saying that cellphone coverage has diminished in their area, and they look forward to better service in that area.
There is a distinct dead zone in that area.
Yeah, it is, yeah, driving through, it's always, always tough. Okay, thank you for your testimony. Okay, so in your packet.
There is no statement of fact.
Statement of fact.
Well, no, because we're not recommending.
The only recommendation I'm looking for is whether or not you feel that the information presented tonight was enough, or if you think we need additional.
Thank you, you mentioned that at the beginning. Thank you for doing that. Board confident with the information that we heard here to make a decision to send it to ADR for approval? Yes.
Second. Can we?
Oh, did you say so moved?
No.
Oh, I thought you said so moved.
No. My question is, in the last application, or from the previous applications, we talked about granting conditional approval if ADR approves it. Can we do that on this one, so they don't have to come back?
I don't see why not.
Yeah, I mean, I, I don't know what ADR is going to add to the equation, but I don't want to, I don't want to take it out of their hands either, so I'd rather hear from them than not.
So if the applicant and ADR are okay, then why?
I mean, if they don't like what ADR has to say, they can just come back.
Okay, so we'll, if we.
I'll make that motion.
Make a motion that if we grant approval and if ADR approves it as submitted and the applicant's fine with that, then we're good to go. Okay, so we got a motion on the table.
Second.
Second? Yes.
Don't they have a conditional use permit and an ADR motion to make?
No.
Or is the ADR part of the?
ADR is part of the conditional use permit.
I just wanted to clarify that you're making all the motions that you need to make.
Am I?
I, we think so.
Yes, okay, so we got a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion carries, you should be all set. So you're good with what we have just said? So if you go to ADR, you don't like it, come back. If you go to ADR and you like it. I, you want to come back and see us, I know, but.
We actually will be back in July, either way.
Okay. What's that?
For interchange.
Thank you, yes. Thank you, have a good night, okay. 7E, let's read 7E into the record if we could.
Greenman Peterson Inc., on behalf of the City of Concord, request review under RSA 67454 for the proposed Canal Street Riverfront Park, which includes walking paths, a pavilion, scenic overlooks, and an expanded parking area at 11 Canal Street in the Opportunity Quarter Performance District.
Scenic overlooks, oh, sounds tantalizing. Let's invite the applicant up and get, his determination completeness was completed in our May meeting, so it has been determined to complete.
I guess we just recommend you open the public hearing.
And we will open the public hearing. Can we get a staff update? Oh.
Oh, hold on, Mr. Walsh.
I didn't see, Mr. Walsh snuck right in there, I didn't see.
Did you sign in?
I did not, no, I have not, actually. I need to do that before I leave. I, I apologize for coming up prematurely, and I think I just screwed up the computer. Heather and Beth and I.
You need help? Do I want to do that while you talk?
Beyond help, yes. Good evening. First and foremost, thank you for your time and service that you give to this board. It is not an easy job, and it's, it's a long, long night, so I appreciate that.
Hey, not long nights.
Not long nights, not tonight, hopefully.
Don't take us.
I, I'm simply here to present the project to you, and I know you have these drawings in your packet. And while Beth is typing, I will just describe it to you. Essentially, ah. Thank you so much. I can just do, yeah.
So this is a 674?
Yep.
54 project.
Yep, but please note that also you do need to take action on the discontinuance. So there's a recommendation in there.
Okay.
Correct. So thank you very much, Beth. So as you can see on the screen, what this project is, is it represents the final phase of the city's 20-year effort to redevelop the former Allied Leather Tannery site. We are proposing to build a new, approximately two-and-a-half acre park adjacent to, located at 11 Canal Street, which is adjacent to the Pennacook Landing Development, which is next door, which is a 54-unit affordable housing development. The project includes several features, a new reconstructed Canal Street Municipal Parking Lot, which will have, I believe, 34 parking spaces in it. There is a fishing pier that is proposed to be cantilevered over the Kintook River near Chief's Restaurant. There is another scenic overlook that is going to be cantilevered further up by a pump house, which is owned by Essex Hydro. Do this, so new parking lot, fishing pier, cantilevered scenic overlook on, on top of a pump house, which is owned by prior Essex Hydro. There is a 24-by-36-foot pavilion that is proposed. Restrooms are also being contemplated for this space right now. We'll see if we can do them per budget. There's a large knoll which will serve as an amphitheater. This area of the site, roughly an acre of it, is actually subject to, the entire site is subject to certain Department of Environmental Services institutional controls, an activity and use restriction, soil management plan requirement, and groundwater management permit, but there is a cap of approximately an acre of material here that is associated with the former cleanup of the tannery site. It's perfectly safe to have a park on top of it, but it is there and it limits what we can do for amenities. Walking path throughout, we are showing connectivity back to Crescent Street through the Caleb property. We have easement deeds to allow that to happen. We are also proposing significant streetscape improvements to Canal Street between Village and Crescent. This includes a 10-foot wide shared pathway to facilitate improved pedestrian access on Canal Street. There's currently a five-and-a-half foot wide sidewalk through here. We're going with the 10-foot wide path to help facilitate future connectivity with the Merrimack River Greenway Trail, which will be developed over to the east of this site by the former Ribco site and the Rolfe Homestead and Barn. Parking-wise, we're adding, it's a net gain of around 30 spaces total. There's 34 in the lot, and there's another 29 or so that are going to be on the street, on-street parking. Currently is only limited to this location here. We are hoping to actually start the streetscape improvements in July. As Beth alluded to, there is information in your packet relative to changes to the right-of-way for Canal Street. We are going to be discontinuing portions of the Canal Street right-of-way at this location, which is actually owned in fee by the city. It was acquired either in the 40s or the 50s, and it's former canal bed for the tannery site. Parking was built on top of it, but it was merged in the 50s with the right-of-way of Canal Street. We're going to separate that because we have private parking arrangements with some of Butter's related to when we acquired the property. And we are also in the process of acquiring additional right-of-way from the Caleb property along their frontage so we can put in the 10-foot wide path. So we're hoping to have those documents taken care of in the next couple of weeks so we can go forward with the streetscape improvements. I think I'll leave it at that. Do you, does the board have any questions?
Yeah, so the, you just mentioned the, the parking arrangements at Chief's in the apartment building. So the parking for apartments, that's listed there next to the Chief's parking. That's for the apartment building up next to the river?
That's correct. There's eight units that go with the, eight parking spaces that go with the apartment building, and seven that go with Chief's. Those are related to arrangements that were made when the city acquired the property in 2012. We purchased it from Chief's. We promised seven spaces at that time. The apartment building already had eight spaces on this property. The apartment building already had eight spaces on this property as part of a condominium that was done in the nineteen eighties and we are just simply relocating where those are gonna be.
So is there anything that can be done with the dumpsters that are there, I mean, I'm just thinking for visitors coming in along that path to the, the.
Sorry about the interruption, apparently I have a thing for pointers.
Oh, good, thanks, thank you. Along the, the path entrance that's there, the backside of those dumpsters, I mean, I've been to Chief's and I, I know that entrance on the side is a little, little sketchy as far as a visual appeal, I'm wondering if there's anything we could do to, to clean that up a little bit.
It's challenging, so the dumpsters will have their own enclosure, there are three dumpsters there, we also have arrangements with Chief's and the apartment building for those dumpsters, those are part of our, a butter agreement, settlement agreement that we negotiated previously. We are showing the pathway here from the parking lot down to the backside of the apartment building, we're trying to provide a pseudo-private way for them to get connectivity to the apartment building, because it's also part of an agreement that we have with them. And we are trying to make, and they're gonna be responsible, actually, the apartment building is gonna be responsible for maintaining that pathway, so that's why that pathway is shown there.
And you do have some elevation, right, so you're going down that pathway to the, towards the water.
That's correct, yeah.
And up, and then back up, so.
There's a great change.
I mean, the natural aspect of people gonna cut across behind, behind the few trees that are there and get up there, but, yeah.
Yep, so it's either here or the other alternative will be down through here, but there is, you know, a fairly, not a huge slope, but there is a slope there in great change.
What's that on the side of the water side up next to the apartment building, is that a, an outcrop out over the, or is it just booms that are there, that white?
White, where you talked about the overhang of the pump house, just to the. Right there?
Yeah.
Um, I, you know, they, they actually have, I'm not sure what that is or why it's shown there, I mean, what this actually is, or there are, there are a series of decks and wooden walkways that are on the side of that building. I don't know what that white line is there or why it's there, but it's essentially, there's a small retaining wall that holds up some land that those, those wooden structures are on.
Oh, you're right, there may be a line on top of it that I see, okay.
Yep.
Okay, other questions from the board, Jeff?
I'm just trying, trying to understand, what is the city's responsibility on the roadway and what kind of is the park, because I know you're rebuilding the road? Because I, I looked through the staff comments and there were a lot of staff comments about truck turning templates and there's a lot of parking spaces on that road that don't meet any standard.
So, yes, and, and GPI, who's the designer for this project, is aware of all of those and will be, will be addressing the staff comments as we go forward with the final design, but essentially the city is responsible for, for all of, all of these streetscape improvements through here. We will be finalizing the roadway designs to be consistent with what the staff comments are before that General Services Department builds it. General Services will be using their, their paving contractor that's working in Pennacook Village this summer, which is GMI. But we are responsible for all of this, we'll make sure that everything is compliant and, you know, where the, the comments that the staff has about that.
The only place I, I mean, the parking was noted, I noticed people noted, some aren't twenty-two, some aren't, you know, nineteen, I think there's a waiver for the less than nineteen. The spot I saw that I was concerned was right here. There's something funky going on with, this lane goes over and it's literally eighteen feet wide, but you're showing two lanes. So there's some striping or something that needs to get adjusted in that corner, I don't know if that curb line needs to be pushed up a little tighter to the ten foot lane as it comes in or something, I'm just concerned as you look through that, I didn't see that in the staff comments, but I saw pretty much everything else that was on my radar, like the driveway to the church on the south, it's not shown and some stuff. I think they did a great job in doing that, thank you very much, that was just the one thing that stuck out into my head was that, and I think you did comment on the connection of the sidewalk on that corner, upper north corner there, we're at, right at, no, right at Villa, right there, it's got kind of a weird connection to get it to be ADA accessible, I think that was in the staff comments, if I was understanding the description correct, so those are the two things, other than that, I like the layout, I, I mean, I think it's a great use for this, for the, for the community. I like the bump outs and trying to create shorter crossings and things, I think that's good through here, I think it's gonna help slow traffic down a little bit through here, I'm excited to see it built.
Yep, it's, it's a, it's a great investment, it's about a three point four million dollar project, we're looking forward to get it going, appreciate your comments and we'll, we'll take those into consideration as we finalize everything.
And you might have mentioned it, Matt, I apologize, I was studying, parking, as far as just general, you know, fishing, coming and going fishing or coming to the amphitheater to park?
Yep, so it's really, the, the parking lot is, it serves two purposes, so the existing lot that's there serves Pennacook Village and as Pennacook continues to redevelop, it's gonna provide parking for those opportunities. It will also be supporting the park, so it's, it's a dual purpose, this is too much in the weeds, but we, we are getting land and water conservation fund grants to support this project. We're purposely trying to keep the parking lot out of that, so we have more flexibility on how the lots are used, so it's not just exclusively for the park.
But there's only a few parking spots in there.
Well, yeah, there's thirty-four in total, we're gonna lose fifteen for private use, so, you know, you're still gonna have nineteen for, for the park itself.
Okay.
Yep.
On the street, anybody else, questions, Carol?
My only questions are around the fencing or whatever on the overlook in the fishing pier, just from a safety perspective, how is that land-water interface being protected?
No, we are providing fencing at various locations, there's obviously railing on, on the, the pier itself, we actually are required, we, we have, we have lots of, we have, we have agreements with Chief's, we have agreements with the apartment buildings, we have agreements with Caleb, and we have agreements with Briar Hydro, so it's a complicated little project, but relative to the section up here, we actually, this is where the boom line is attached for the dam. And Briar Hydro is basically, we're, we're under obligation to provide fencing through there, six foot fencing, we're talking about with them to see if they're willing to relax that standard, but we're prepared to honor the six foot fence. But it's something that we're, we're cognizant of and.
Will it be aesthetically?
No chain link, just something nice?
Uh, we, we are talking about basically vertical fencing, not, not chain links, something that's not climbable, so we're, you know, you'll see ornamental, black.
So kind of maybe like what's on the National Guard off of Airport Road there, the, not the pilasters, but the black, almost broad.
Yeah, something, a black metal ornamental fence with, you know, strictly vertical members, that's not, yep, exactly, yep, yep, no razor wire.
Questions? Okay, any member of the audience have any questions or concerns about this application, thank you, Matt. Nope? So from our perspective, Heather? Do we need to do anything, recommendations?
Discontinuance?
Provide feedback to consultants relative to the overall concept, I think we heard, overall concept, everybody liked the overall concept. And the right-of-way easement deed to be accepted by Caleb.
So we need a recommendation to council regarding the right-of-way discontinuance?
So, um, the board rec, the, the, staff recommends that the board recommend to city council that a portion of Canal Street be discontinued, that a right-of-way easement deed be accepted from Caleb Pennacook Limited Partnership to widen a portion of Canal Street, and then a sanitary sewer easement be conveyed by the city to Caleb Pennacook Limited Partnership. So if there's no concerns, we, are we okay making that recommendation to city council? No concerns noted, everybody's okay with that, so duly noted, we will, we will make that recommendation.
Motion.
Motion. Motion's been made and seconded, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries and moves us on into the night, seven F, if we could read that into the record?
Yeah, North Point Engineering, on behalf of Mark Boucher, requests major subdivision approval for a four lot subdivision on property off Elm Street in the medium density residential district, it is very hot here. Uh, staff recommend, uh, the staff has previously recommended this application be determined complete, and we recommend opening the public hearing.
Take it.
So moved.
Second. Sorry.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, welcome to the table, if we could get a staff update on this, it's about a thousand degrees up here, isn't it?
Yep, subdivision for three new house lots, staff rec, the applicant, in conversations with staff before, before tonight, the applicant is, should be requesting a waiver to Section twenty-eight oh one to provide a landscape plan signed by a landscape architect. Staff is in support of that waiver, provided they meet all requirements, they can, and there's space to just put it on the site plan. Staff also recommends that the board discuss with the applicant about consideration for shared driveways or not. And we also want to clarify restoration within Elm Street, engineering has concerns about mill and overlay with the existing pavement that will be left and recommends a full reclaim, so we wanna the board to discuss that with the applicant and have clear restoration moving forward on the plan.
Okay, welcome to the table, if you guys could state your names to the record?
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, I'm Joe Wickert, I'm the surveyor that prepared the plan in front of you, to my left is Ian McGregor, the project engineer from North Point Engineering. Give you a brief overview and then we can kinda go into some of the questions or specifics, so we've been in front of this board twice previously, I think this is our third time. This one too. That's a remote, don't touch that one. So, um, on the southeast side.
This side might have a.
Andy Sandborn broke it.
That was David Rossio, the Rossios broke it.
Oh, yeah, Andy Sandborn's sitting back, yeah, sorry, Andy. David Rossio broke it.
So, we, we were here in front of you in twenty seventeen or eighteen, we subdivided off this lot here that had the existing house, which was the old Throw Residence at one fifty-two Elm. Last year, we came in front of the planning board and we subdivided off this lot at the northeast corner, we, that one's lot twenty-six two. So when we did that lot, the reason we did it individually was the sewer and water were already to the property, so we would not have to do a utility extensions, so the property straddles the Boskwin's Concord Town Line, so we have about sixty, almost eighty-six hundred's worth of an acre in Boskwin, none of that will change, so that's gonna remain in Boskwin, that'll be one parcel of land. The property is lot twenty-six one on tax map fifteen P, is currently configured, it has almost eight hundred feet of frontage on Elm Street with the exclusion of the cemetery here that, there's a little old parcel that's in fee, and then it has twelve point two five acres, and what we're proposing to do is to create three road, uh, three road front lots on the, I guess it would be on the northeast side of the lot. These three lots here, which we're showing is twenty-six, three, four, and five. In the RM district with sewer and water, the minimums are a hundred and twelve five, we're proposing a hundred foot of frontage and it's roughly thirteen thousand, a hundred and forty for each lot. As part of this application, we have a four hundred foot water main extension in Elm Street, a four hundred and thirty foot approximately sewer main extension in Elm Street. We have, all the new lots are a hundred percent buildable, we have, the existing lot has some steep slope and wetlands, so that won't change. Should the application be approved, we would, the remainder parcel would still have almost four hundred and ninety-four feet of frontage and eleven point three acres of land. It's kind of a split zone parcel, so like right around the Brook area, there's a, on the north side of the Brook is RM, on the south side is RO. And we have the staff comments and as Alec had mentioned in his report, we are asking for one waiver, that waiver is for the landscape, landscape plans. We were agreeable to the street trees, we were just hoping we could do it a little less formally without the, I think it's a, we would normally need a landscape architect. But we, we do plan on putting the street trees, we have, we had the initial set of comments from staff, we've addressed those, we went through, and there's a latest staff report is dated June twenty-first. We have some technical issues to work through, which we're fine with, but I think otherwise we should be in good shape, as Alec had mentioned, one of the comments was the board may require shared driveway, so we would prefer not to have to. The property, you know, we have three lots, if we're gonna share, we're only gonna have one less curb cut onto Elm Street, and as they're fee lots, we would, we would prefer each lot have its own curb cut, but obviously that's up to the planning board. We also are aware of, engineering has said that they would, they're leaning or requiring a full width overlay, and if that's what ends up, they require, then that's what we'll end up having to do.
So the full, uh, full width overlay would go the, the distance of there?
Right, engineering is recommending a full reclaim, go down twelve inches and a full width of roadway, and then place four inches of pavement on top of that.
And, and the reason being, they're gonna be putting in new lines and ripping the street up almost completely anyways, right?
And there will be small slivers running parallel with the trenches remaining.
Yeah, okay, okay, go ahead, sorry.
Oh, and so we, I think that had been brought out on one of the pre-application meetings, so I don't think that's necessarily a, a total surprise to us. So I, I think that's all I have, unless you have questions.
Great, questions from the board? Shared driveways, so let's talk a, a little bit about shared driveways, I, I'm indifferent, I get the appeal of wanting to do shared driveways, but I also get the appeal of having your own driveway. Finishing it off, you've got, what, third of an acre on each of these, is that right?
Correct.
Plenty of room, what's the intent, I mean, I don't need to know what the design's gonna be, but you're gonna put houses towards the back and have garages or what, I mean, what are these, what's the intent on?
The applicant isn't actually planning on building, but it probably, there's a new, uh, twenty-six two has a new house under construction.
Yeah.
My assumption would be something similar to that.
Okay, what type of house is it?
It's a Cape.
Yeah.
Trying to, I drove by, I don't.
When we did that one, so the problem with that lot is, like, this, the lot to the north is sort of a little distressed. So that lots, that house is the buffer, and then, you know, depending on, on the market, but I'd imagine that we, I think we have, can you go to the next sheet, we have driveways. So we are showing, you know, we're showing the driveways, each of the driveways is on the right-hand side as you're looking at the sheet, so, you know, if we, if it was preferable, we could look to like sort of pair the driveways up so they're separate, but, you know, kinda driveway, driveway as opposed to, you know, to do that, we can work through that with staff if the board prefers.
Heather?
So I think we had made the recommendation to discuss it because in the past, when there's been multiple frontage lots on these types of streets, we recommended that they do shared driveways, like, if you recall, the sixteen lot subdivision on Abbott Road, we had them do shared driveway, driveways. So I, I did not drive, I did not do a site visit here, so I, I actually don't know what the quality of the road is, I, I know Elm is a long road and is it fa, I don't know if it's fast-moving, if the cars go fast down there, so I would consider the speed of traffic into whether we're recommending that, but we would not prefer that you pair them closely because there's a requirement that you have forty feet between driveways, so it would be safer to have them spaced more regularly or farther apart in terms of conflicts with entering and leaving.
And again, as the applicant said, you're, you're gaining one curb cut if you, if you do a combined two. Well, yeah, no, you've gotta have one on the, between.
You would need at least two.
You'd have to have two instead of three.
Two instead of four.
Two instead of three, well, the other one's already done, so that, the other one's already.
No, there isn't there, the big lot to the left shows a driveway and then you have
Yes.
three lots.
Yeah, and you're still gonna have that.
We don't, we don't have a plan to necessarily build on the remainder at this point in time, but correct, so we could, you know, if it needed, we, if we needed to, we could situate a driveway there.
Right, but my concern is you're showing that fourth driveway in the big lot there to the left, isn't it?
Right, this lot here you're talking, but we're showing that just because we have to show a driveway location for the, for the submission.
What I'm understanding though, if we're gonna approve the subdivision, that lot is part of the subdivision, so we would be looking to say shared driveway, and that would be the shared driveway for that lot now. It wouldn't come back, I think, later and you wanna move it fifty feet down the road. I would think if you're gonna go shared, we look at these four lots and all four have a shared, so you don't have two with a shared, one with its own, one with its own. Even though the remainder might not be built at this time, we could still permit the dri, approve the driveway if we're gonna go shared.
What's the board's flavor on shared driveways, I mean, I, again, I'm indifferent to it, I, I, I would prefer a single driveway, but, per law, go ahead, Carol.
Yeah, I lived in that neighborhood for a number of years, and, I mean, that's a straight, flat, stretch, it's in keeping with the rest of the neighborhood to have. It's in keeping with the rest of the neighborhood to have individual driveways. I am fine with that.
Yeah. Okay, Jeff?
Mr. Chairman, my concern is when you look at the buildable kind of square that's drawn, if you could go back to the previous plan for a sec, and the depth of the lots, I think my concern would be if you try and go in, split the drives and then somebody wants a part, you're going to end up with the driveway like right at the property line. I think, to me, I think in this case, I am in favor in some cases of the shared. This one because of the depth of lots, I don't think I would.
Works as well.
Feasibility wise.
And again, to Carol's point about the keeping and the, you know, the look and feel.
Right.
Okay. Any member of the audience have any questions or concerns about this application? Okay. We'll close the public hearing. Thank you for your testimony. Move back to our report here. Okay. And again, findings of fact, the public testimony, the applicant's conversation and presentation and the materials provided by staff form the basis for our finding of fact. Would someone like to make a motion to grant, just right into subdivisions? No, I thought there was a waiver.
I don't think it's in.
It was, this came up kind of, the waiver requests came during public hearing, in short. So we have to add that.
Okay, so let's do that first. Can you give me some verbiage on the waiver request? We'll take that as three point. Three point two, zero.
Or three point one A.
Three point one A, how about that? Three point one A for the record. Somebody want to give me something to say regarding that, the waiver request?
Do you have anything, Alec?
What's the waiver for?
I guess we, we're recommending the waiver to have a landscape plan that's not signed by a landscape architect.
Well, we didn't talk about that at all. So the landscape architect piece of it.
So I, I just, for clarification, they do have a landscape architect. He's not, just not a New Hampshire stamped. He doesn't.
You could reference general comment one, like four. For your language. Oh, thank you.
That's the waiver request.
No, we're, pretty much the only landscaping that they need is six street trees. So where staff's comfortable with.
Staff's comfortable with the fact that you don't need a stamp, the stamp in New Hampshire.
Recommending the waiver to section twenty-eight point oh-one to not have the plans be stamped by a landscape architect.
Wouldn't be providing landscape plans at all, or is it just the?
They're, they're putting the landscaping on another plan and that, with all the information that's needed. It's just not stamped.
Comfortable with that? Someone like to make a motion to prove that waiver is outlined?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries now on our packet for information. We've got to mention the reclaiming and resurfacing of the full length. Staff recommends reclaiming to twelve inches. Reclaiming to twelve inches, resurfacing full width. We okay recommending that? Jeff?
Quick question. Does city spec for reclaiming match DOT spec? So that they have to go in, do sheep's foot roller, add extra stone, meet a certain specification? Or is it just called generic reclaim? I assume staff can work that out, but I just want to make sure we're not, because some contractors are going to do it a little different. I just want to make sure we're getting a solid product that's going to last.
Yep. Yeah, Jeff, I don't know. I don't know if the city spec matches the state spec on that, but.
So we'll leave it in your capable hands to make sure we get a good solid.
Per city specifications or requirements of engineering. I'm fine with leaving it at that.
Okay, with that in mind, do we need to add that in as a condition of approval? I don't see it in there anywhere.
I would just say per, make sure the reclaiming meets city specification, engineering requirements. I'm good with that.
Okay, we're good with that, Heather?
Yep.
Okay. So would someone like to make a motion to grant the major subdivision?
Are the trees covered in what?
Yeah, yep.
Okay.
Someone like to make a motion to grant major subdivision approval? Again, I gave you my finding of fact, right?
You did.
Okay. Grant major subdivision approval as outlined with precedent conditions one through six. Subsequent conditions one through seven. There's a couple of notes on seven as well.
Mr. Chairman, wouldn't the precedent conditions have to be one through seven because I added to make sure the reclaim matched?
Added, yes, sorry. So we'll add as precedent conditions one through seven for the record, with the seventh being the information regarding reclaiming and resurfacing. So we've got, do we have a motion?
So moved.
Motion has been made and seconded. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries. You're all set. Thank you. Okay, let's move on to item seven G in our packet.
North Point Engineering, on behalf of ZV Investments, requests major site plan approval for the addition of six residential units to a three-unit building, expansion of parking areas and conditional use permits for a driveway with reduction and driveway separation alternatives at Five Thomas Street in the high-density residential district. This was previously determined, complete, and staff recommends that you open the public hearing.
Okay, so no determination of completeness component for this. It's already been done in the May seventeenth meeting. We'll open the public hearing. We'll welcome the applicant up and we'll get a staff update on this if we can.
Yep, I'll do my best here. So in short, the existing sites are three-unit multifamily use and there is a six-bay garage structure. This project is proposing to renovate the inside of the existing multifamily unit through phases, add on to that to increase, remove that six-bay garage structure and replace it with a new five-bay garage with two apartment units on top. There will total be a nine-unit, nine multifamily unit. The applicant is hoping to increase that in the future. As, so they went to ADR and ADR is not recommending approval without them coming back to address some concerns. The applicant is requesting three waivers to allow a fifty-three-foot wide driveway where twenty-eight is allowed. Staff is not in support of that waiver. They are requesting a waiver to construct a sidewalk along the frontage and pay a fee in lieu. Staff does not support that waiver. And they are requesting a waiver to not require all of the impervious area stormwater runoff to be treated. Staff is in support of that waiver. They will also be requesting two conditional use permits. One to allow a twenty-two-foot wide driveway where twenty-four is required. Staff supports that waiver. And to allow two driveways with only two hundred and forty-seven point three-five feet of frontage, two hundred and fifty is required. Staff is in support of that waiver. The applicant has, since the determination of completeness, provided a revision that staff has not completely reviewed. So they might have some comments and they might have some material to provide during public hearing. Staff has recommended the garage unit with the two apartments on top, the orientation of that be considered. And I'm not sure what else to say. That was a mouthful.
Okay. Before we welcome you guys to the table, I want to bring the board's attention to the supplemental attachment that's in your packet. The, the plans and the architectural renderings are stunning. They look beautiful. I want you to see, make sure you recognize, because I'm going to mention the parking area in front of the garage area. So on sheet six of the supplemental, you'll see an elevation view south of the existing six-bay detached garage. That's the garage that we're talking about in its current condition. There's, I've got some serious concerns on parking in, at street level, even though this is a dead-end street. And you heard, you heard what staff said. You've got your work cut out for us to tell us why this is a good project and why, why you're here. So welcome to the table. I'll say that with a tongue-in-cheek, but welcome to the table. Tell us about this and see if we can get through the, the matter here.
I hope we can. I think we can. Mr. Chairman, my name is Jeff Lewis from North Point Engineering. Just for the record, I am a member of the Conservation Commission here in Concord. Not here in that capacity tonight. I'm here in my professional capacity representing the applicant, the property owner. I was Dan Martin sitting to my right. And Aaron Tebow is a project engineer for my office who has worked on this project as well, who can help answer some technical questions if we have any. We, we've been working on this project for several years with Dan. He's an experienced developer, but this is his first kind of foray into Concord. So he's taken a while and I'm going to turn it over to him to just introduce himself a little bit and then, and then take it from there.
Just not to, not to jump on, on anything here, but I will make note of the lentils above the windows and the, the shutters and the wide corner boards and the details around the soffit, so check mark for that.
And the chimneys, don't forget.
And the chimneys, yes, sorry. No cupola, come on.
Yeah, well, we'll throw one on there.
All right.
Yes, thanks for your time tonight. I'm Dan Martin with ZV Investments and Shanner Luxury Homes. I'll make this real quick on my part and turn it over to Jeff for all the really fun engineering stuff. But I was introduced to the property in May of 2020 and we did our due diligence at that time. And the bullet points we came away with, it's a very old, large, ugly building that needs a lot of attention and redoing, which is what we do. It's a hugely underused and inefficient building. It's very large with three units in it. It's got potential for much more than that, as does the lot in general. It's the eyesore of the neighborhood, which is unfortunate as it has significant street frontage in that neighborhood. Interestingly, it is one of ten lots on Thomas Street, but it makes up a little bit, less than a third, about thirty-three percent of the total road frontage and exposure. So it has an enormous street presence to it, which is a real plus from our perspective when we go ahead and do what we envisioned doing there. It required a handful of variances, which we identified and fortunately were, were granted the variances we needed, which was awesome. And at the end of all that, taking all that into consideration, we determined it had good potential and we moved forward and purchased the property in July of 2020. And Jeff and team have been guiding us through the process because as he said, this is my first venture in Concord, which has been great, but.
This, this in particular has been excellent.
Been awesome. I have every meeting I've been to, though, we've been, I think, the last presentation at the meeting. So I don't know why that is, but.
Blame Jeff.
Thanks for your patience. Anyway, our vision, Thomas Street is a, is a beautiful residential street. Very well kept by its, by the property owners on Thomas Street. They're very proud of their property and their street and it's very nice. Five Thomas Street is by far the largest property on the street with the most visual exposure. As again, it covers a third of the Thomas Street frontage. Not only that, but it has direct exposure to Loudon Road and Hazen Drive. So it's just a very visible, high-profile property, which is begging to be turned into something really nice, which is, is our goal. And again, as I mentioned, it's undeniably the eyesore of the neighborhood. So for all those reasons, our vision is to turn it from that eyesore into, the eyesore today into what a beautifully designed, fully landscaped, building code compliant, building with incredible curb appeal, curb appeal and street presence. That being said, I'm really excited about this project and look forward to it. I think it's going to be really nice if we can go forward and, and complete it. So that's our vision and I'll turn it over to Jeff for the funds.
Thanks, Dan. Just a quick orientation. I'm sure everyone's familiar with this, this project. And we have, and just to kind of build on what Dan mentioned, he did approach us with his project back in, in the spring of 2020. It was right at the beginning of the pandemic and he wanted to move forward. It's an existing three-unit building on that site, three-unit multifamily with this kind of odd garage, six-car garage right up along Thomas Street. And he came to us looking to expand the building, renovate the building, add additional units. And it was right at the beginning of the time where the city was entering into the new process for the, for the new zoning ordinance. And we identified this parcel as kind of a, maybe a target parcel that would be affected by the, by the zoning. As, as it stands right now under the current zoning, he's allowed to have nine units on that property. And he'd been thinking he wanted to get maybe ten units on the property. So we had an initial meeting with staff way back then and kind of reviewed a concept that's very similar to what we, we ended up with here tonight. And we decided to hold off for a year, which ended up being two years, in hopes that the zoning ordinance would, would move through and that he'd be allowed to have the ten or more, probably end up having more, more density if that does go through. As you all know, that, that still hasn't come to fruition. So this past fall, he decided I need to move forward with something on this, on this plan. So we, we brought, we resurrected the plan we've been holding on to, brought it back to staff, started the process again. We knew we were going to have some zoning issues, so we identified six needed variances on the property. One of them was to go to ten units from nine units because we are only allowed the nine units. So we did go to the zoning board this winter. We were successful, successful getting five of the variances that we needed for setbacks and parking and stuff like that. We did not get the variance for that tenth unit. So we're moving forward with a nine-unit development right now, but we're trying to plan for a potential tenth unit in the event that the zoning ordinance does go through and he is allowed to have more density. We had already set this project up for that additional unit. So that's kind of where we're at. I just wanted everyone to be aware of that because it plays into the layout and then how we came up with this design. And as you start looking at the site, it is a really unique property here. There's obviously some history with this with Loudon Road and Hazen Drive. As I explained to the zoning board, this, this property, which is right here, sits right on the intersection, right in the corner of probably one of the busiest intersections in the city, Hazen Drive and Loudon Road. Yet it has the, one of the least traffic, amounts of traffic on it. It's on a dead-end road at the same time. So hard pressed to find a, a similar type property, which is why it is unique and I think why the zoning board did give us the relief.
So what do you, what do you know, sorry, Jeff, what do you know about the history? I, I'm pretty sure that that's the Johnny Prescott building before when they, when they, when it used to come out on to Loudon Road. So originally, the road connected to Loudon Road. Vino's was on that corner originally when dating myself here. But Vino's was on that corner before they put Hazen Drive in. It was just down a little bit. I'm almost positive that that's the old Johnny Prescott building. And the six-bay garage was the, the trucks that he used to, not the delivery trucks, but the service trucks that they used to keep in there.
I do not know. I, I do not know either and I would have, I didn't know about Vino's.
I had written myself a note about environmental concerns just because I'm, 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 I'm pretty sure that that's what it was. And it was, they didn't have material there. They just had the service trucks and that was kind of their home base. And I, and I'm, I'm pretty sure that was, that was what the property was originally.
That makes sense. In any event, now it is on a, it is on a dead-end road. So to access it, you really got to go down, I don't have it on this map, but Orman Street would be near McDonald's over there. You come down that and you turn down Prescott Street, which is really a dead-end road and ends here and then turn down Thomas Street. It is really just these houses right there at the end of Thomas Street. And then, let me scroll down here. So this is, this is a view looking at it from Loudon Road if you're going by. It is visible from Loudon Road. This is just a Google Street view. So you can see the house right here behind a, behind a tree and the six-car garage is right there. And here's the dead end and the hammerhead turnaround at the end of Thomas Street. There's some pictures here that are included in the narrative. That's just a photo of the existing front facade of the existing three-family multifamily and then the, and then the existing six-car garage. So Dan's early, early, you know, idea here was, hey, can I make use of this existing garage? And can we add a second story on it and get two of the units on top, up on here, build up? And then add additional units to the, to the existing three-family and get my nine or ten units. So from the very beginning, that's what we've been, we've been looking at. And we had some conceptual plans based off of just GIS maps. And then we got a survey done by Joe Wickert's office and we realized that the existing garage is really across the property up here. It's right on top of a drive, the adjacent property's driveway. And it really wasn't going to be feasible to, to build up on top of that. So what we ended up doing was proposing to kind of pull that, that's a demo plan. I'm going to skip to the site plan here. Was pull that building off the property line a little bit to honor the ten-foot side setback. Lose one of the garage bays, so we'll have five bays instead of six, and then add the second story to it in basically the same, the same area there. So it still does encroach into the front setback, which means we still needed the variance for that. It still does have, we would have parking with direct access or backing out on a Thomas Street as it does today. So we needed a variance for that. We're not allowed to back out under the street. So those are a couple of the variances. So those are a couple of the variances that we, that we did get from the, from the zoning board. And that would be the intent, is to rebuild that garage as a five-bay garage instead of a six-bay garage and have two units on the second floor. So that would add two units to the site. And that's probably the first thing that, that Dan would be looking to do, is rebuild that garage out there. Then we look at the existing building here, and that's the existing three-unit building. He's identified space in that building for six units. So he would be renovating that, really overhauling it and turning it from three units into six units. There's two, two stories there, so there'd be three on the first and three on the second. Is that right?
One, um, one, two.
There's one upstairs, downstairs. Anyways, six units in the building.
I'm sorry, you think I know.
And then, and then the concept was to have an addition on the north end of the building here that would have been the two units, the two additional units, so that would get us to ten. However, knowing right now we're only allowed to do nine, the idea would be this would end up being one unit right now. He would hopefully make that the last phase of the project. So we'd come in here, build the new garage, build all the site work, the parking areas. Then as a second phase, come in and renovate the, the existing building. And then as a third and final phase, come in and add the addition. And hopefully at that time, he'd have the ability to add two units there instead of one. If that were the case, we'd obviously have to come back to the planning board for amendment to the site plan. But we'd hopefully have all the infrastructure in place to allow that. And if not, if the zoning doesn't go through, then he'd just end up without that one unit there. So that, that's, that's how we're moving forward. If we go back and look quickly at the site plan, or this is the removals plan, it shows you a little bit better. This is the current driveway configuration here. There is a, this kind of looped driveway. So right now, we have one, two, three driveway kind of curb cuts on Thomas Street. All the parking out in front of this existing unit, and then obviously the driveway apron here. So we'd be looking to take that all out and move the, move the parking to behind the building. So adding parking spaces over here that would serve both the units above the garage as well as the units on this end of the building here. And then what we really want to do, and this is what took us a few months back in the fall, was to work with staff to see if there's any way we could access the end of Thomas Street, the dead-end portion. This little triangle piece of land down here is city property. It's not a right-of-way, but it's a de facto right-of-way, because it's really an extension of the Tom, the end of Thomas Street. And there is a hammerhead turnaround that ends right about there, my cursor is. So our idea would be to extend that out to here and then allow us to have parking right off the end of that, which would, which would, you know, prevent us from having to have another curb cut on Thomas Street out here. So that was something that seemed to agreeable to staff. It would require a licensing agreement as a condition of approval of this project in terms of the maintenance responsibilities for, for that extension of Thomas Street and how the city maintains it versus what the developer or owner maintains in terms of the parking spaces. But we're confident that that's, and I believe staff is, is on board with that, that that can be worked out. So that's, that's really was the last piece that we were waiting for feedback from staff before we move forward with this, this plan. But that is the plan. So we have seven parking spaces down here to serve the building and then the additional parking lot up here. And, and there has been a little bit of confusion about how this whole garage would, would operate. And I think that may go to some of the, the discussion about the waivers. The intent really here, Dan's intent, is that the, the garage spaces, those five garage spaces, we have identified them as parking spaces on our plan. The intent would not really be for those to be designated parking spaces for any of the nine units. We have ample parking out, out here. We have twenty parking spaces, surface parking spaces, which is intended to be two spaces per unit, two spaces for ten units, obviously in anticipation that we'd get that tenth unit. So right now, we'd be required to have eighteen parking spaces where we have twenty. We do have these five additional spaces in the garage, which he's designated more as storage area for the units. So the, the concept there is that any one of these nine units would be able to rent out one of those garage spaces for an extra vehicle or extra storage space. As you know, storage spaces at premiums these days, when you end up with these small apartments, if anybody has a couple of cars and a couple of kayaks or anything else that they want to store in there, this gives them, or, or a third vehicle or something like that, motorcycle, who knows what. This is a, this is a potential, you know, asset that they, someone could have for additional storage area. So that's really the intent there. If someone parks a car in there, that's fine. But we're not intending on using those to, to count for our parking spaces. Sorry.
Yeah, go ahead.
I'm sorry to interrupt. I just wanted to clarify, that is within the city right-of-way. So not only can they not be designated, but people shouldn't be parking there at all. It's not okay, you'd need a license from the city for them to, to park there at all.
Sorry, I was talking about the garage spaces, not the, the actual.
In the garage.
In the garage.
Okay.
In the garage.
Because I think there, I've heard other comments about.
No.
People parking on the driveway area, which is, which is, half of it is within the right-of-way.
Right, so.
So there, there should be some kind of, like, condition that people can't actually, can't park there, if the board approves this design.
So that's been.
And you cannot park in front of that garage door. Is that what you're saying?
Right.
Correct.
Correct. There's not enough room.
Well, right, right. So, so that is, that is definitely the intent. We're absolutely on board with that. The intent is not to park cars there. And it'd be to get in and out of the garage space or potentially parking there to unload something into the garage space, but not to be parking there and leaving a vehicle there. I know that the renderings that have been submitted to you folks show parked cars there. That's an absolute mistake and not the intention. One of the recommendations that, that staff had, we did have a sidewalk out there with planning and with the engineering department and the traffic engineer was to provide a, a concrete or some type of alternative material sidewalk across that area right there, that driveway apron, which would deter people from, from parking there. I don't really think people are going to park there. We have ample park, which is one of the reasons we want to have the parking spaces. It's going to be more conducive and easier for people to park closer to the entrances of the building than it would be to be out here. It'd be, it'd be easier for them to park along the street to get to the unit than it would be to park there. The, there is no direct access from those garages up to the units above them. The entrance to the, to the, to the building and to the upstairs units is from behind, out back, where there's stairs. And certainly if people were parking in here, you know, parking out in the front there to, to get over here, they would not, they would not do that when they could park closer to the entrance. So it's, it's definitely not our intent to, to have people parking out there. It's just to use the, use the apron that's basically there, there now, just make it a little bit more conforming. Again, I do have some, I'm going to show the photos once, but I'm going to just skip down here. So that's the, that's the proposed garage, what it would look like. That's the existing garage with the apron. So essentially, we're, we're talking about having that condition, eliminating one of the, one of the bays, so we'd have a green space at the end, but having a similar condition here with the garage with, and that's probably Dan parked there right there. I didn't even know that when that photo was taken. But I don't think you see residents parking there, and there'd be no reason to think that residents would park there, especially if we have enough parking on the, on the site. So, sorry, I wanted to just, I couldn't, I mean, these are all the renderings that the chair was referring to that are part of the application. I just threw a couple of them in here so we could look at. I know that ADR did have some, some comments on the, they wanted to see some materials and some colors that we hadn't provided. There were some discrepancies between shutters and, and stuff like that on the building that they would like us to update and come back to them. We were hoping that that would be stuff that we could go back to them as a, as a condition of approval if we're heading in that direction tonight. We do know we need to go back to them, but hopefully it's just on, on those items, colors and materials of the building. I'm going to jump back. We do have a, I don't want to take up the whole, the whole time here. I know you folks probably have some questions. I'm just going to mention, we do have grading and drainage plan. We do have a comprehensive landscape plan, road patrol plan, a couple lights we're proposing on this, on this plan. I'd have to answer questions about that. I did want to touch on the, the waivers and the conditional use permits. One of the waiver requests that we have is regarding the sidewalk. We understand that there is a, the master plan does designate Thomas Street as having a future sidewalk. There's not a lot of sidewalk out there on Thomas Street and Prescott Street. There's one section, I think, of Prescott Street that has sidewalk. We look at that and say, and we've shown the sidewalk on the plan. Right now, we've identified it as a future sidewalk right up along the right-of-way line. So we're not proposing to have a curb and a raised sidewalk here. It'd be a grass panel and then a sidewalk right along the right-of-way line. We show it right along there. We show it crossing the driveway apron right here. Our proposal would be that we build the driveway apron, we build this sidewalk with a different material, and we prefer to, to pay a, an in-lufi or whatever the mechanism is. Instead of building the sidewalk, Dan feels that that potentially go to some better cause in the city. If we build the sidewalk here right now, our feeling is that it's, it's unlikely to, to ever get extended there. It is a dead-end street. I'm not sure people have been across the street to walk down a sidewalk on the other side where they can walk down the middle of the street, on a street that has no traffic. So we requested that waiver. We understand staff does not support that waiver. So we're fine putting that sidewalk, and we certainly don't want the project to be held up because of the sidewalk. We leave that up to the board to decide whether or not that, that effort and money is worth a sidewalk here or, or somewhere else. So that, that's one waiver. Through here. We do have one waiver for water quality standards, and I don't want to spend too much time on that because it sounds worse than it is. And staff does support that waiver. This is really a redevelopment site, so we have a comprehensive drainage analysis. We are treating stormwater runoff from the site. We are not increasing runoff from the site. We do have a storm tech infiltration system up in the big parking lot up here. But because there is a lot of impervious area on the site, we're trying to just do a, a net reduction in terms of, in terms of stormwater runoff, which we are achieving without treating or slowing down the runoff from this parking area down here. So technically, the site plan regulations require that all impervious areas need to be treated. It gets a little gray on these redevelopment sites where you are redeveloping a large portion of the site. We are certainly making this a, a much better situation by capturing all the stormwater up here, most of the stormwater from the buildings and treating that. We would like this paved area here to continue to drain to a catch basin at the end of Thomas Street. It does, does meet all the other requirements, so I believe staff supports that waiver request. And let me flip here. And the other waiver is the driveway, the driveway width. So that, that gets us back to this driveway here, which is fifty-three feet. So we, we do have the variance to allow us to back out of this garage. We do have the variance to allow that garage to be within the front setback. But there is a site plan regulation that would prohibit us from having a fifty-three-foot-wide driveway. Again, that's less than what's there today. It's a better situation. We have asked for that waiver. We understand that staff does not support that waiver, and they prefer to see us break that up by putting a island or a refuge area here for, for pedestrians on the crosswalk. That's not something we prefer to do, but if the planning board does want the sidewalk to go in, that's something that we could live with. We wouldn't necessarily eliminate a garage bay, but we would just have no driveway in front of that garage bay. So we could add a, you know, ten-foot-wide or eleven-foot-wide island in there to break up that apron into, into two, which is one of the staff recommendations. So if that's, if that's something the planning board could get on board with and would make it more palatable, that's something we could, we could agree with. We certainly would like to see the project move forward without any major design changes. And then one, a couple of the things. I know one of the concerns is just about snow storage and, and parking spaces on the site. And as I mentioned before, we do have twenty parking spaces. We really do want to have two spaces per unit without considering the garage spaces. We do only have nine units, so that would be eighteen spaces is what we need rather than the twenty. So what we're proposing to do is we'd like to build these thirteen spaces up here, but we certainly don't need to have the two northerly spaces. What we, what we'd be looking to do is just use that whole area for, for snow storage now and not designate these two spaces for any actual unit. We would prefer to build them now. Certainly, we could identify those as future spaces if the planning board didn't want us to build them now. Either way, we could have more room for snow storage up there, and we could deal with that if we ever come back to the board for the additional unit. So if, if that is a concern of the board, we could talk about those, those two parking spaces up there. We would like to have the, the two parking spaces per unit, which is the core requirement of the ordinance. And then the last thing, which we need to bring up, and this, after spending three years on this project, this just came up this week. As part of the, the second review through staff, engineering department identified the need for trash, potential need for trash dumpster on the site. We had previously.
Dumpsters.
Dumpsters. Well, it's been a question all along, but our answer to that has been, we'd like to do curbside removal on this site. So at every staff meeting we've had at the zoning board, everywhere, all along, all along the way, we've identified that as, that's what we were going to be doing. Unbeknownst to any of us, I think, and certainly hadn't raised the, the question at the staff level even, was the fact that there is a, an ordinance, not a zoning code ordinance, but an ordinance in the solid waste section of the, of the code ordinances, that says that any, in order to do curbside trash pickup, you have to have, and you're a multi-family, you need to have eight, or you need to be less than eight, eight units. If you're eight or more units, you have to have a dumpster. That comment just came to us this week. So we're scrambling around trying to figure out if that's, if that's the case. We just had a call today about that, wondered, trying to figure out if that's something we can get the zoning board to weigh in on or if it was another variance we would need, because it was not identified any, at any time previously. It's not in the zoning ordinance, so I don't think that there's an opportunity for the zoning board to waive that requirement. If we're going to have more than eight units here, we, we need a dumpster. So lesson learned on that, I think, for, for all of us. So we need to try to fit a dumpster on the plan. So we just shared this quick, oh, I have it here, sketch with staff today.
Do you mind if you have the, the laser pointers there using that?
I don't think it is. It's not this one, right? Is it?
Heather?
Can I just share, we did reach out to General Services to get clarification on their policy on that. We found the language equally unclear. Because it says may this and may that, and there's no shells in there. So we, we did reach out to them. They probably didn't, they haven't responded to us yet. So in our minds, it's potentially still a possibility that you could get curbside pickup there.
Okay.
Which I think we would, we would prefer, but we just don't know the answer yet.
Give it back. You can't see my cursor? So this is just a sketch that, we don't, we really wouldn't have an opportunity up in this area to provide a dumpster. If we do need to provide a trash enclosure, it's, it, it, because we're in a residential neighborhood, we got to be twenty-five feet away from property lines of adjacent properties. That would really only apply to that.
That's an awful place for it up front.
Well, okay, so he says up front, you know.
Well, up front, meaning on Loudon Road. I'm, I'm just thinking the traffic that's driving by.
I know. So, so the zoning ordinance does require it to be to the side or rear of, of the building.
Yeah.
Which that is back there. I would call this the front of the building, and I call this the side or the rear. At the end of the hammerhead here, we'd want to place it so it's out of the way of any snow storage that happens at the end. And ideally, in a spot where we didn't have to eliminate any parking over here.
That's awful.
This keeps it about fifteen feet away from the property line. Again, if we, if we get an interpretation that we don't need that, we would, we would not have it. If this is the holdup tonight and we can get through the rest of the issues, you know, we're just obviously trying to.
Put it anywhere.
Well, not put it anywhere, but, you know. Deal with it as a condition of approval. I think we're, 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 we're okay with working on all the rest of the comments, technical comments with, with staff. We have no issues with them. We'd like the board to weigh in on these, these waivers, because that will affect kind of where we're going. And on this plan, we did show how this would look up here. If we were to add that kind of island right there, it would look something like that. It would break up those, that long driveway. We would still have two aprons here, two aprons here, and probably just a walkway in front of that garage bay there, so people could, you know, again, get in there, get their stuff out if they wanted to, grab their kayak or whatever, but they wouldn't, we wouldn't have to have the pavement right there. And these are the two parking spaces where we'd like to pave them, and just use it for snow storage. But those are the two extra parking spaces we have right now that we can talk about with the board. So I'm going to stop there. I know I talked a lot, and you probably have lots of questions, so thank you.
I saw a layout comment on, we'll either structure utilize or upgrade to natural gas service. Is that? Is that, I don't know where that comes from, but is that, you guys using any natural gas in the buildings?
Yeah, yes, all the services will be upgraded, water, sewer, everything. I mean, it's, all the utilities are there, but all the services will need to be upgraded. So the gas service will need to get on the plan.
Okay, I think that needed to be, it just says it needs to be represented on the utility plan.
Correct.
And pavement restoration. I had a question on dumpsters, so I can scratch that off, snow removal, scratch that off. Lighting was the only other one that I had, you're going to have lighting out in the parking areas?
Yeah, we're showing on this plan two just residential style fixtures, one in the front parking lot and one in the back parking lot right there.
Okay. So my concern when we first looked at the plan was the parking in front of the garages. You're waylaid out a little bit in the sense that you're not going to have people parking there. I don't, I mean, it's a natural place to park. You're going to look at it and say, I'm just going to pull in here and park, I'm going to run back out in a little bit or something like that. Or I want to do something in the garage, I want to wash my car, whatever it might be. I mean, it's a ticketable zone, so I mean, if you're parking in the public right of way, it's, you can't do that. So I did have some concerns about that. I looked at it and said, why wouldn't they put this building over here? Why wouldn't they move it over this direction? Why wouldn't they turn it over in this direction? And I get it, it's site limitations and things that make up the structure of the site, so. Let me, let's see what we got off of questions. Jeff?
So on that same theme of the parking, if you're meeting your twenty parking spaces with the parking lots, theoretically, you don't need the garage parking. And you're saying you're expecting it to be used for storage. So why not eliminate the driveway, put the sidewalk across and make more doors consistent with a storage facility that are five or six feet wide? So if people want to access them, there's no way to get up into the building, then they're truly being used what they are for. You've got a consistent sidewalk across and nobody's parking in the area, you know. That's one thing. I am not in support of the waiver of not doing the sidewalk, because there is that little connection that kind of comes off Loudon Road and there's a natural, you know, future connection all the way up. So those are the two I see that are the big issues for me.
Okay. Amanda?
I like the idea of it being storage doors instead of garage doors. Being someone who's lived above a garage before. If you have four other, let's say two of them are for the two occupants that are living above, let's just say, and you have someone who is not resident in the residence that's above the garage, who comes home at one o'clock in the morning and they're not one of your roommates and/or partners, that it's quite annoying and very loud to have a garage door open underneath when you're in there. So I just thought I'd point that out, that I don't think that that's a very good design for someone who's living above those garage doors. So having storage doors instead of garage doors would probably be, would eliminate some of that future, I would say complaints from residents that would live above those garage doors. The other is the parking that is at the, I'm going to look at this plan as being on the south end, that is very obvious and/or visible from Loudon Road. I don't see that you have any screening on that. I don't know if that's, I know that it probably meets the appropriate setback, but you're also just having these cars, even though they're parking for that apartment, sorry, the multi-unit housing, that's Loudon Road right there, so they're going to be very visible. I just thought that there could be, the landscape plan I didn't, unless, if you could show me differently, that it'd be nice to have some screening. It could be natural, you know, it could be shrubs, it could be trees or whatnot, but I just noticed that that would be very visible from Loudon Road. Those are my comments.
I thought a nice white fence out near, out near the, you know, at the end of the hammerhead that went all the way down to the corner and then buried back up into the trees would look nice. Again, just, obviously you run into issues with the right of way and it's not your land and maintenance and all that, but I think it would make a nice, you know, white, the nice like horse fences, the white post and rail, I think they call it, I don't know what they call it, so. But point taken about some screening on Loudon Road, especially if you're going to have a dumpster out there.
Yeah, and I think that for someone as such myself that is at that intersection daily, if not three to four times a day, to be, would be a little more obvious, especially if there's a dumpster, just, you know. Even though that's a residential frontage, it is, you have to remember, it is very visible from that really big intersection there. And so I just, I just think that that would be a bad place for that, in my opinion. So it's just, just a thought. I also had a quick question about when you have residential, is there an ordinance? And maybe someone from the planning department can help. Does the front door actually need to be visible from frontage with a notice?
Front of the house.
That the doors are side, on the sides, if you have a visual of where the doors are. I thought that residential, and maybe this is different from multi-unit, that residential doors had to be front facing or I didn't, so help me clarify if that is still beating those codes. I mean, just the door placement seemed odd because it's not visible either way.
I'm sorry, you're asking if the-
The door placement for the garage.
Yep.
I say garage apartments, the two apartments that are above.
Yep.
Whatever maybe, that the door placement isn't front facing.
On the street level, it's around the back.
They're like side, under the deck, they're hidden.
I think that's an architectural issue.
Yeah, but there's no ordinance that says if you've got a building, you have to have a front door?
Not yet.
Go quick.
That's the proposal in the new code, that there be a front facing door, which plays out oddly in this situation.
As you see, the doors are actually side, kind of underneath their balcony.
So underneath those balconies?
Yes.
That's where the door is?
Mm-hmm.
Yep.
My thoughts are-
Because they're entering from back there, so.
Apparently, they will not, if they were to have a parking spot.
No way to get there.
There's no way to go in through an internal garage.
You've got to go around.
And there's no walkway around.
Around it. If they are the ones that are parking in there, as you said, it's not guaranteed, but anyways, I just, those are my three.
Yeah, sidewalk around might be, well, there's no sidewalk anywhere to any of the units from the storage units, so.
Yeah, and if you're looking at-
They have to go up the driveway.
Would be if you deal with sidewalk. If you did a sidewalk along the road, you could come back up.
And if you're looking at from the street, if you're looking at the right-hand unit, you, people are going to walk around that side of the building and not walk all the way around the backside of the building without a walkway around it. Right? Okay, Carol? Anything else, Amanda, I'm sorry.
Oh, no, that was my three.
I mean, with all this discussion about the sidewalk and the storage, I'm wondering if it's worth thinking about, and if you're going to change the doors to be storage doors as opposed to garage doors, if it's worth thinking about having the entrances to the storage from the parking lot rather than from the street side? Because then, you know, you're parking in the parking lot, moving your kayak and it gets that traffic off the street right of way of-
Orientation.
That building. So that's something to think about. For the, for the snow storage at that end of the parking lot, I'm just thinking about drainage of meltwater. Is that going to go into the pervious surface kind of behind? Or where's that meltwater going to go?
Want me to answer that? Anything that, any of that storage area up here would drain down into the catch basins that are in the parking lot here and into our infiltration system?
So basically, you're creating a situation where that meltwater is going to run down the length of the-
Into the parking lot, correct, yeah.
That might not be an ideal situation.
Yeah, that's- It's going to run down the whole parking lot? No, that's not right.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah?
Well, there's a catch basin in the parking lot, so it'll run to-
Oh, okay, yes, catch basin, I'm sorry, I was thinking impervious surface.
It'll run down to this catch basin right here.
Yeah.
It's where anything melting will go down. I mean, that's how snow melts in all parking lots that you go in, pretty much, yeah.
And then the lighting, we talked about a little bit, it wasn't clear to me that those would be full cutoff?
They'll be full cutoff, yes, if that doesn't say that, we would, that's the intent.
Thank you. And then, I mean, I would urge staff to encourage their ability to use curbside.
Yeah, we're in support of it. I mean, we just have to check with what the policy is in general services if they're, what that is.
Well, if we need to-
Engineering and planning are both-
Encourage them in some way. I mean, both from utilization of the property and just from a solid waste management perspective. If they do curbside, they can recycle, it's just a much better situation than putting everything into a-
So I think, I think we just don't know the answer yet. I will point out that if they do, if they will not, if general services will not take curbside and they have to put a dumpster there, they will need a conditional use permit. So you guys will need to come back to get a conditional use permit, because it's not permitted in the zoning ordinance to have that. Isn't that true? You're looking at me funny.
I think it is permitted in the zoning ordinance, it is permitted in the zoning ordinance.
Because it's a side yard?
It's not the yard, it says to the side or rear of the building, it doesn't say anything about a yard.
Yeah.
So that, to me, that is the side and the rear of the building. So I don't think we need to, I think it needs to be ten feet from the property line.
Yeah, okay. So from the zoning perspective, you're okay.
It needs to be screened with a fence and landscape, so we'd have the landscape buffer, but I think we could put it there.
Yeah, so also just one, a few things on that, like, I don't think, they don't want to put it there, we don't want it. So we'll just have to work through it and see what the answer is. I just want to point out on Fruit Street, the Salvation Army building, that had to put their dumpster literally like right on Fruit Street, very visible and in a highly, you know, trafficked area. And I think it's, it's not great, but they do have it very well screened. I don't know if they always have the gate shut on the front of it, so I think that would be one thing, is to keep the gate, to keep it closed so you can, can't actually see into there. But they are required to provide landscaping around it, a buffer around it, is in the zoning ordinance for dumpsters. It's not great, but I don't really see anywhere else on the site where it could go, if they're required to do it.
Hope that-
And I don't see what a post and rail fence would do to-
Just visual.
Just visual, just a, yeah.
I'm sorry, I would rather see landscaping, even if it means they have to put it in the city's right of way, you know.
You mean along the-
Along that stretch to kind of hide that parking.
Yeah.
My biggest concern with that parking is I just don't want people to start thinking, oh, it's the end of a street, I'm allowed to park there. It's not on private property, sort of look, and then the dumpster's right there, hey, by the way, why I'm here, there goes my dump.
I think if you make a condition for that, that you should, the condition should be made subject to approval by council, because to the extent that that is in the right of way and we are, we will be presenting a license agreement to them, it could be part of all that. Because we, the board can't dictate what, you know, what-
No, 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 I understand, but I think a recommendation from this board to provide something of that sort would be advantageous.
Subject to council.
Okay. I'm not, I don't throw a, I don't know where the controlled access right of, I don't know where the state right of way and the city right of way ends right there.
It's the city.
It is.
The city has jurisdiction over it.
Okay. There is an existing large bush in the, basically the end of that triangle section. We do have it shown on the landscape plan. If you go by tomorrow, you'll see it, it's probably ten feet.
Yeah, I've got it right on street view and it only hides, maybe the last two spaces realistically.
Yeah, gotcha.
Yeah, I see how you have it there, but as I said before, your parking goes past that.
Okay, what else? Any else?
One last, I just noticed as I was looking on the plan, right at, and I don't have my pointer in, but right where the property bound is at the hammerhead, almost where the little sidewalk cut comes across from, sorry, Jeff, I'm trying to explain it there. That property bound right there. There's only, if you measure across there, there's less than twenty-four feet. Is that acceptable to engineering, that that hammerhead is going to be less than twenty-four feet in that area? Especially for plow trucks.
I don't know if it's plowed, is it plowed, the hammerhead? Or is it just buried at the end?
I mean, this is our plan right here, we're showing a twenty-four foot.
No, I know, but if you actually measure, there's a pinch point, you see how the curb comes up away, angles up away from your line?
Yeah.
So right there, there's a pinch point, so I don't know if that's going to have to be a curb that's parallel to the section that's along Loudon Road, to make sure there's actually twenty-four feet at that point and it's not a pinch point.
I don't think your other one's twenty-four feet either, is it?
That's their driveway though, not the city.
This is the existing hammerhead you're talking about, so that's existing right there. We're proposing to widen it a little bit, but-
Right, but you're now using it as a driveway, so what I'm just-
The one up above. What's that?
So we have a conditional use permit to allow twenty-two foot driveway, so twenty-two foot is the, is the, I mean, that's intended for this one.
Right, understood, but that's a city street still, at that point, within the hammerhead. So, I mean, I think it's easy to fix, you're just literally moving that northern curb line to be parallel to the southern one and cut the corner a little bit, right from the, like, the five-foot radius.
Right here.
Yeah, that's all you're really doing, that's what I'm just saying, just enough that there's twenty-four.
If the city's concerned about that, that can be made twenty-four feet, sure, I mean, that's something we can look at with engineering.
And I'm fine, yeah.
It's doable, like you said.
It's just, you know, if it is still being plowed and they have to swing the corner, I just want to make sure there's enough room in there.
They plow it now.
All right, let's move on. Any other questions? Any member of the audience have any questions or concerns about this application? Nope? Heather? Okay, we'll close the public hearing, thank you very much for your testimony.
Sorry, can I just address a couple of the questions? Or, I mean, if you're going to be talking about it or where we're headed tonight, but, I mean, and maybe you want to chime in in this. Just the comments about the garage, I mean, this is the plan we have presented. I mean, we have spent quite a bit of time getting to this plan. And unless Dan's going to say something different, I think, you know, we would, we would like to move forward with the plan with the garage doors on the front. These are all, all the comments that were made are things we had talked about before, there'd be units above, upstairs of the garages. As I mentioned, it's not the intent for those garage spaces necessarily to be utilized by the people above them. So these are all things we've taken into consideration. We did get the variance from the zoning board to have the garage there with the backing out onto the, to the street. So, you know, we certainly can live without the long driveway, the wide driveway there, but we would like to move forward with minimal changes to this, something that we can, you know, advance, you know, as soon as possible. If we need to go back to ADR, we prefer to be going back to them with just materials and colors and stuff like that. I don't know if you wanted to add anything?
Well, I would just add that, you know, it is kind of important to have the use of parking garages there and I see it really only potentially for winter parking, but that would be a nice asset for the tenants to have there. I don't see anybody parking there in the summer because it's just not convenient, but wintertime, people are going to want to park in there. As far as the, being under the units, that's a good point, but they make the belt drives, they're whisper quiet now. They cost more money, but they're really effective. So, good point, but I think, I'm comfortable with that scenario. So anyway, it is fairly important to me in this project, if we, to have that extra piece. We've given up the sixth unit and now potentially the fifth unit. I would really like to have the other four garages to use.
Okay. Any comments or questions about that?
Just a comment on the garage door. If I was living there, I'd want a garage for my car. So, you know, that's just me, but then, you know, there's an advantage. And I understand living above one, because I also lived above a garage at one point in my life. But, no, if I lived there, I would want a garage.
Okay, all right, good, thank you. So we'll close the public hearing. So in our packets, we've got a bunch of technical review comments. Alec, can you give us a quick overview of the waivers again? I know there was a recommendation to deny a few of the waivers, just give those to us. So if you're looking in your packet, it's under six point two? Is that the first one? No. Six point three, right?
Yeah, if you want to just review the waivers.
Just the waivers, yeah.
So the staff is in support of supporting a waiver to- So the staff is in support of supporting a waiver to section twenty-two oh seven for the not treating some sections of impervious area water runoff.
Okay, so that's, that's six point three in our, in our, in our packet?
Yeah.
Okay, so I'm going to take that one. I'm going to take that one because I want to talk about a couple of them. So staff's in support of that. Would someone like to make a motion to grant that waiver as outlined in your packet? Again, I'm going to back to determining that the findings of fact are the testimony that we heard tonight from the applicant. The packet of information that we've got is what we're basing our fi, our findings on tonight. So would someone like to make a motion to grant the waiver for six point three, which is site plan regulations for twenty-two oh seven, five water quality standards?
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries. So six point four, Alec, can you give us that? That's deny the following waivers for nineteen oh three, which is residential driveway and access standards and sidewalk required. Can you give us a little quick review of those two? Well, go ahead.
That is essentially staff is not in support of having that fifty-three foot wide driveway without at least some type of interruption in the middle of it. You know, which also could act as a pedestrian refuge, you know, if the sidewalk was to be constructed. And then that second one being that staff is not, staff would like to see the sidewalk built, you know, as, you know, as part of the city pedestrian master plan. And we, instead of letting, instead of the applicant providing a fee.
Okay, so let's talk about sixteen or nineteen oh three, which is residential driveways and access standards. The fifty feet, three foot driveway, remind me, where is that?
It's the garage.
It's the garage, the front of the garage. So the, the, the recommendation would be to break that up in some capacity between the, between the garages.
With basically the landscape island that they've shown.
Right, right. So any comment, questions? Yes, Matt?
So if I understood it, putting some sort of a pedestrian island in there would effectively eliminate one of those garages.
Yeah.
Well, it would eliminate its use as a garage. It could still be used for storage.
I, alternatively, again, I, I get it. I understand that they want to have the, I want to have all of them accessible. It's just a lot of pavement.
I'm still not a hundred percent sure that nobody's ever going to park there.
Oh, they're not. You're definitely going to have people park there.
It's going to be a continued issue.
You can't, you get a ticket, but how often are they going to come and give them a ticket on a dead end road?
Somebody complains, that's how I get a ticket during that one.
So what are we, what are we, what are we thinking on that? Support of that or deny that?
I, I would be leaning toward deny the waiver and break up the driveway at a minimum to two smaller with the piece in the middle to kind of break it up if it's going to stay there and they want to use that as a garage.
What's the, what's the minimum, what's the minimum break you could have between the garages? Garage has been built, sorry, has the garage?
It's existing.
Patty, uh.
No, it's existing. It would be demolished and reconstructed.
On exactly the same pad?
Probably about ten feet.
Yeah, well, roughly.
No, they're moving it back. Everything's going, right?
Yeah.
So what's the, what's the minimum breakup? I mean, could you have a one foot?
No.
Well, I think if you, so if you're going to, anything you put there is going to prevent that space from being used for a car, right? So if you're going to ask them to provide something there, I would suggest a regular landscape island because they're not going to be able to use it for a vehicle. So you might as well maximize that space to be able to be used for a green space and a substantial, I mean, a one foot is not a pedestrian refuge.
I know.
So I think just the way they've shown it is substantial enough to, to break it up visually and experientially for a pedestrian.
So if you think about it, it's fifty feet, three foot driveway, five doors, so it's a little over ten feet per door. So if you take out that one middle one, you're talking about a ten foot island.
But again, you get, it's, it's a dead end street. I mean, I, I get the pedestrian island aspect of it if it was on a busy street. But I'm, I'm, you know, I'm struggling with forcing them to, with forcing them to break that up in an area where you're not going to have a lot of people walking down the street. And then, like you said, you're probably going to have them walking down the middle of the street. I get it. I understand it. And the letter of it, you look at it and figure it that way. Are there other, are there other ways to determine or to deter? No, I guess you got to break it up. Maybe that's the only way to do it, to stay within the standard and, and not give them the waiver. I'm inclined to, to, to grant the waiver. I, I, even though I'm opposed to the big, long space of, of, of tar, I, and I think people will park there. And I can't believe I'm saying that, but yes.
I would say, one related to whether the board grants or doesn't grant, as they kind of showed that larger landscape would provide enough grass area potentially to plant a tree that would discourage anyone from just driving over and utilizing it as your garage or something. They would really break it out then.
Say that again? So where would you put, do you still, still have the five spots?
No, if.
Can we pull up their sketch?
If, if it was to be removed in that middle, having that wider area, could allow landscaping, break up, you know, and add like Heather has had a proper landscape.
Okay, Heather. Yeah.
Well, it seems like a tree there, sorry, it seems like a tree there would make it challenging to get kayaks in and out of the door.
Of the door behind it, yeah. Good point. Good point.
Agreed.
Okay, well, let's see where we go on this. I'm going to make a motion that we grant that waiver for residential driveway access and access standards to allow the fifty feet, three foot wide driveway.
I'll second that.
So we got a motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor? Hands.
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, so that motion carries. So that has been granted. Three point, sorry, twenty-one oh two sidewalks required to not provide a sidewalk as required based on the fact that this section of sidewalk is a pedestrian master plan and would connect to existing infrastructure. Again, I'm struggling with the same, my same argument. I don't think there's going to be people walking down that street looking for a sidewalk. So I'm intended to, I'd intend to grant that waiver as well. We've done it enough times. I know the wrestle at that with a lot of other ones, but Matt?
What about the fee and lieu of that?
Oh, fee and lieu, yeah. Fee and lieu would definitely be part of that if we did grant it. Jeff?
If you're going to grant it, I don't know if we can scroll up on that page a little bit on the plan. I don't, well, I suppose. Is it possible, sorry. If we're going to grant it, then I would suggest at a minimum, this sidewalk come out and wrap so that you somehow out to here so you can get to this connection on Loudon Road.
Yeah, I'm good with that.
And then we waive the rest.
I'm good with that.
I like that.
Yeah, I like that idea. Good call.
I think that would be a reasonable compromise to have that at least come out so that that connection to Loudon Road can be used by those residents.
I'm, I'm okay with that. So you, and again, we'll let engineering figure out the details of that and how that may affect that corner of, that you were talking about as well.
Plowing.
That waiver for sidewalks required under twenty-one oh two, twenty-one point oh two, with the condition that they extend the sidewalk coming out and wrapping around into the, into the end of the, or into the hammerhead, I guess, or to the end of the, the, the property line. Okay, someone like to make, second that? Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? No. Okay, so no, no opposed, no opposed. So six point five, if the board determines to grant architectural design review approval, staff recommends granting the approval subject to applicants returning to ADR to view colors, materials, window styles, shutters, and revising application materials to match the plan. I'm going to say that that's not going to change, right? We don't need to do a motion or anything for that, do we? What, to grant ADR approval? Sorry. Oh, water quality. Sorry. No, we did water quality, didn't we?
Yes.
Yeah, we did that. That was the first one.
Yes, you, you need to make a motion to grant ADR.
Yeah, so would someone like to make a motion to grant ADR approval as outlined?
Me, aye.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries. Six point six is to grant the following conditional use permits in accordance with section twenty-eight, seven, eleven, alternative parking arrangements of the zoning code of ordinance is section twenty-eight, seven, eleven G driveway width reduction where the total drive, total traffic will be less than thirty-five vehicle trips and vehicle trip ends on a weekday to allow for twenty-two foot access driveway where normally twenty-four feet would be required. And I'm going to do them both together. Grant, or section twenty-eight, seven, eleven F driveway separation alternatives where compliance cannot be achieved in order to allow the establishment of two driveways having only two hundred and forty-seven feet of frontage where two hundred and fifty is required. Would someone like to make a motion to grant those following conditional use permits as so eloquently outlined?
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries. Six point seven is to grant major site plan approval for the proposed multifamily use. It's five Thomas Street, subject to the following precedent and subsequent conditions. And those are outlined in precedent conditions one through seven and subsequent conditions one, two, and three. Any changes to that?
I don't think in my report I referenced obtaining the license through council.
Attaining the license for council for.
Yeah, so that would be subject to the, the approval of that license.
Subject to the approval of license by council for the encro, encroachment into the right of way, is right? Okay.
Mr. Chairman, number eight, just to work with engineering to clarify the width that's required.
We're okay with that.
What's that?
Engineering's okay with that.
No, on the, on the.
No, 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 the width of the hammerhead, not the width of the drive.
Correct, we are, engineering is okay with that.
Okay.
Okay, so we'll leave it at seven with.
I received confirmation.
Subsequent conditions one, two, and three. Would someone like to make a motion to grant major site plan approval? Motion has been made and seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries. You guys are all set. Thank you very much. Thanks very much. Okay, let's move on to the next item on agenda, seven H.
So seven H is Andy Sandborn. On behalf of Big Step LLC, request major site plan approval to construct a charitable gaming hall, restaurant, and microbrewery along with a conditional use permit approval for disturbance of wetland buffers at Seven Break Day Drive in the Gateway Performance District. This application was on the agenda not as a public hearing and was advertised not as a public hearing. So I think that's of concern. I was going under the assumption previously agreed on at the last meeting that we were going to undergo a study. And so people who called me and said, is this going to be on the agenda? I said, no. So we've communicated to the public that this was not going for a public hearing because that's, that's what I thought. I thought we were, didn't have anything new to present. We were in the process of hiring a consultant. So from the last meeting, this was continued, I apologize, I'm going on a little bit, but this is the staff update. So from the last meeting, it was continued to this meeting. So we, they did make known to us at four thirty today that they did want to go for a public hearing. So we're, you know, they're entitled to have a public hearing because they're, they, because it was continued from last month to tonight. So I just want everyone to be aware that this was not on the agenda as a public hearing and members of the public were specifically told that there would be no public hearing and chose not to come tonight as a result of that. So I, I think that's of concern. But they did say that they had a study that they wanted to present. We did not receive the study. We don't have a copy of the study, but they're going to present it this evening. And so I guess I will let them take it from there. You recall last month, we approved everything except for the major site plan contingent on the public municipal services concerns that there were.
All right, welcome to the table. If you guys could state your names for the record.
Good evening, Mr. Chair, members of the board. My name is John Cronin, counsel for the applicant. With me is Mark Fugier and of course, Andy Sandborn. So just to recap the last meeting, we had submitted a public impact service, a public service impact statement. There were some concerns. Some of the members of the board had issues with the lack of fire and EMS services. Other folks wanted an independent report, which you voted to do and continued to a date certain. So I don't believe there's an additional public notice required, but that's not really relevant here. We were hopeful that there would be a report and a consultant selected shortly after that meeting. Mr. Fugier, he submitted a proposal, I think, to do the work on May twenty-third and did not hear back. We didn't hear till Friday that the town, the city had elected to go with an additional consultant, a company out of Boston, at a cost of fifteen thousand with at least a sixty day window from the receipt of payment to get the job done. We had assumed that that might happen. And when Mr. Fugier didn't hear back, other than to say that they were looking at other bids, we asked him to go forward. Great if the city elected to hire him. If not, we would guarantee his payment, but we wanted to have him at least have that data with respect to the fire and the EMS for the members to complete the record that was provided before. Mr. Fugier, who's here, I think he was the initial expert recommended by staff. He's done a lot of work for the city in, in years gone by. And he has taken a look at the original comment, I believe in the staff report of what was wanted, went out and got the fire and the EMS data and included phase two in his analysis. So he's here tonight. He can give a little bit about his background and tell you what he did and how he did it and what his conclusion was.
I'm, I'm just checking, verifying. Did you see, I, I thought we continued it to this meeting. And I was just going to go look at the minutes to see what the motion was. Because if it was continued to no date certain, this was not a noticed meeting. So it's subject to somebody calling this into question. If that's true, I will check with it. But this was not noticed at all as a public hearing. And so there's a, there's a statutory legal requirement there issue with regard to that, that leaves this open to somebody contesting it and saying it wasn't noticed and so therefore the, whatever we do is invalid. I just want to put that out there.
I reckon we don't control the, the notice and how you do it and if that's an issue.
It's not how we do it. It is your responsibility as the applicant to make sure that the notice is made. It is entirely your risk that someone can come forward and your approval, it won't come on the city. It will come on you. Your approval will be voided because it wasn't properly noticed. So you're going, you're proceeding at your own risk without a proper notification.
We, we understand that and, you know, we had filed the certification with the council. Your ninety-five day clock ran out in April. But we're here tonight just to fill information that you folks wanted with respect to fire and EMS. So I'm not going to say anymore. I don't really want to get into a debate about it. I'd just like Mr. Fugier to tell you what he did and how he did it.
And Mr. Chair, if I might interject, the member Teresa Rosenberg specifically said, and it's posted within the mini, meeting minutes from last week, that she wanted the report for this meeting. I think that's a clarification of where the board was and where it wanted to be, that it wanted to be at this meeting and it's, it's documented in the minutes, sir.
Just for clarification, we did confirm it was noticed, it was postponed to tonight. So that, it was noticed till tonight.
So it wasn't no date, so no date, sir. It wasn't no date, sir.
Correct. I, I thought that was the case.
Okay, continue.
Good evening. For the record, my name is Mark Fugier. Fugier Planning and Development. I'm a planning and development consultant from Milford. Provide services for both public and private sector clients in New England and New Hampshire. It's my understanding, based on correspondence that I've read from Attorney Cronin and staff, that one of the concerns the board had was what type of municipal impact or service impact this project may have on, on emergency services. So that's what I collected this data on. Just for background, the city receives approximately fifty-three thousand calls a year for service and the fire department approximately fifty-eight hundred calls for service. So we looked at four projects, casinos in the region, one in Oxford, Maine, Boston Billiards in Nashua, Casablanca in Belmont, and The Brook in Seabrook. We got calls from all four of those municipalities from police and fire, which are shown here. If we add up those totals, convert that into a call per square foot. The proposed casino phase one, we're estimating approximately a hundred and ten calls annually, two calls a week, fourteen fire calls, and forty EMS calls. The future phase caused for another expansion, those calls would increase to a hundred and thirty for police, seventeen for fire, and forty-seven for EMS. We also looked at other commercial areas, uses in the community, in the region, because there's going to be other uses in, in phase two. The Cropone Marriott was actually noted by your fire chief. It's a ninety room hotel and twenty-one thousand square feet over at the Cropone Center. They get about thirty-five calls a year and five fire calls. The Oxford, Maine has a hotel, which is attached to the casino, hundred and seven rooms. They get about twenty police calls a year and four fire EMS. They get about 20 police calls a year and 4 fire EMS. The draft, which is always obviously an existing use in the community owned by the applicant, it's 26 and 5. Walmart, a large commercial use in the community, 421 police calls a year and 42 fire and police. Two restaurants as comparables, the 99 and Olive Garden, with those called data listed. And then I got calls from the Tupula Music Voluntary, 700 seats. Phase 2 calls for an 800-seat venue. I thought that would be a good comp to use. They do not see a lot of activity at the police department, about 11 calls a year and 4 fire EMS. So I've been using this type of process metric measurement for years in my analysis. It's a good way to gain a measure of what that impact may be on a community for police and fire, just like you look at school data for impacts of apartments or residential development, how that might impact a community. And I think it gives you a window into what type of impact it may be. You know, this project is going to provide economic opportunity on Loudoun Road. Obviously, there's been significant decrease in value in that neighborhood with the mall. You've lost over $70 million in value from that property over the last 15 years, which equates to over $1.5 million in tax revenue. So this project will certainly help fill that void from that lost value. It does not generate a huge amount of calls. I had a couple conversations with the police chief in Oxford, Maine. He has a very good relationship with the casino. Obviously, it has impact on their department. It's a very small town, much smaller than Concord. I think it's a population of 4,200. But I think these numbers provide some clarity and hopefully answer some questions that you may have of what this may, the type of impact this may have on the town.
Okay. So is this what was submitted to the city? As far as, I mean, I know we went from a 90-page report last month to one page, a one-pager, so this is...
Yeah, I wanted him to come here in the shortness of the time. We wanted him to come here, he's done his research, and talk to you about his conclusions, and share his opinion, his professional opinion, as to whether he believes approval of this project will create an unusual risk on public safety services.
Okay.
And Mr. Chair, if you remember, I think the board felt comfortable on the data that was provided relative to police response throughout the state of New Hampshire on the different types of entities that exist. But I think it was Jeff raised the issue that he was concerned, and others agreed that they wanted more information, I think Counsel Chapman as well, that they were looking specifically for more information on fire and EMS response. So we asked Mr. Fugier to really focus on that part, so we could give the board an illustration of what we see at other entities around the state of New Hampshire that are much larger and do significantly more business than what this is proposed to do, but also tie it into a square foot, I know that was an issue that Jeff had had, to try to give some sort of a representation of what to potentially expect, if anything. But honestly, it could be zero, right? It's so hard to look into the future and know what it is, but the board asked the question, and as we have continued to try to do month after month after month, is to provide them with answers to the best of our ability with the information that we have, to give them an illustration and find support for the project. So in this case, obviously, you know, they looked at all of the entities that were raised by this board and said, "Well, what about this location and this location, and what about police, and what about fire, and what about EMT?" And here you have in front of you is a concise, clear picture of what it actually is, and hopefully that provides you enough information to find a level of comfort, or we can answer questions for you.
Okay. Questions from the board?
I have one question, and I apologize. I've been sitting here for a long time. I had to get out. So what is the date of this data? Is this current, I mean, I don't see a date on it.
Yes, it's all data I collected over the last two weeks.
No, no, I know you, I knew that, but I guess what I'm asking is, when you talk about police calls, is that 22, is that 20?
It's all 20, it's all recent, within the last year, the Oxford, Maine. That chief gave me that data off the top of his head because he reports monthly to the state, so that's within the last year. The only dated, I say dated, data is Nashua, because I asked them to run the numbers, actually for another client, last year, pre-COVID, so it was 2018, 19.
So Nashville's 2018, 19?
Right, but everything else is up to date.
So does that mean, and this is annual? These are annual calls?
Yes, this is total annual calls, right.
I'm just asking to... So annual calls and the, okay, so Oxford, Maine, we would assume it was from last June to this June, or last May to this May?
Right.
Thank you.
Okay. So I'm in a precarious situation. I understand your situation, and I hope you understand mine, that we were told, we've told people that there's no public hearing tonight for this. I can't in good conscience ask to render judgment without at least opening up the information that you presented, let staff digest it, and then give the public a chance, just like we always do, give the public a chance to come up and either yea or nay it, and tell us what they think. And I'm interested in your dynamics here. I mean, we've had four hours or five hours of, we didn't even know you were coming tonight. So, you know, maybe that's, some of that's on us, I'm not sure where that all lies, but I want to know what you guys expect tonight and where we can go from here.
We're hopeful that you could approve the project. Most of the things have been addressed. You know, we've already raised issues. I'm not going to belabor them about this report not having at least been done in Ms. Shanks' tenure, or no evidence that it's been done prior to that, even with things like Friar later and others that go. But we think we've provided adequate evidence to warrant an approval. We would ask you to do that. And we're in a difficult spot, I am. You know, my job is to try and get this approved.
Absolutely.
There's time pressure every month with fees to extend purchase and sale agreements and consultants and everything else, so it's a pretty big burden, and it's been going on for a long time.
So again, it's not a lot to look at, so I'm wondering what, yes, Jeff?
Mr. Chairman, I've mentioned it before in front of this board that I'm not comfortable when applicants bring information in front of the board the night of a meeting that has not been available to the public and is asking us to render decisions. We've actually pushed back on previous applicants and continued them a month later to allow us, the staff, and the public to look at it, because I question, you know, that was one of the big questions. This started at the public level.
Right.
Questioning all this stuff, and now here we are, expecting to make a, you know, without them being able to absorb it and have a comment or questions themselves.
And I don't disagree. I think that's an important piece.
I'm assuming there's backup data that supports this as well?
Well, that's what I was asking. I don't know that there is, so...
Well, I mean, I can support, I can support every call in here if you're looking for the call logs.
Okay.
I can, I got the data over the phone from the fire, police chief in Maine, so I don't, that's not written down, but anyone can certainly call him, but I have the backup data for all this stuff. I just, I usually don't attach that type of thing, but...
So, you know, again, you know, the city's entered into a contract to do this work now at more money. What's that?
With respect for they haven't entered into it yet, every other third-part review that I've been forced to go through through this entire process would not be started until I gave the check. I've not been asked to give a check. I've not been shown an RFP, I've not been shown anything, and this is part of our frustration, part of my frustration on the continual delays month after month after month, because it always waits until it's three and a half weeks from the last meeting before anything happens. And this is just yet respectfully another example that there have not, hasn't gone a bid. I've never looked at the bids, I've never seen an RFP, I've never seen, I've never seen a request for a check, and it, this is part of the challenge here, right? That you all are supposed to make a decision based upon the information you have within a certain time, and I think that's 95 days from acceptance of the application. And while you ask for the information, and I think I've been tried very, very hard to give you whatever you've asked for, that even asking what is the effect going to be, at the end of the day, my understanding, and please correct me if I'm wrong, even if it was big and they needed to hire firemen, they needed to hire police, that's not the process of accepting and voting and approval for a plan. But yet here we are tonight for the third month in a row debating what the number is, and Matthew, you're an attorney, this is not part of the planning board process to make a decision if there's going to be enough police or not, and we have to hire more if we don't have to hire more, but we've been willing to do it because I've been trying to be a good neighbor through this entire process. But at some level, I'm asking for consideration to put my glasses on on this side of the table and say, "Is enough enough?" And there was a robust discussion last month where they, I think Matt said, "Maybe we should, it's just time to approve this." And on your question relative to, "Has this been noticed?", I mean, the minutes were very clear, the, you know, Teresa was very clear. By the next meeting, I want to see this information, make a decision. It's in the minutes. Read them, you can read them. I think that's my understanding of Robert's Rules of Order, or Mason's Rules of Order, which I tend to be a disciple of, is sufficient.
Well, I mean, again, we can agree to disagree on, you know, if Teresa, if Teresa did say that, that's Teresa's opinion, and I think what we took away from that was what the staff took, which was go out and do the request to look for a couple of folks to present us with it. Did you have something?
Yeah, I just, I mean, there are a few things there. For one thing, Teresa said she wanted to see some activity happen, she wanted to see something happen, she didn't want it to take too long. There was blatant understanding that we were not going to be able to hire a consultant and get a report at the very next meeting, which is why we suggested tabling it to no date certain.
But that's respectfully, respectfully, that's incorrect, because we know that Mark said you could get the report.
We have the minutes, and we can watch the video, which we've done.
But we know, Mark told you, you could get this done for this meeting, and you chose not to hire him.
Excuse me?
Mark told you, you could get this done for this meeting, and you chose not to hire him.
That's not part...
That's fact.
That's not relevant. Our process is that we require, the city requires, three submittals, which we received.
I've asked you for three submittals on several things, including the water study, and you say you picked your own consultant, and I just had to live with it.
Can I just...
But that's fact.
This isn't productive, it's not.
Yeah, can I just speak, please? We have on-call consultants for everything, okay? So if we go with an on-call consultant, we don't need to get three submittals. Two of the consultants that we, we actually went to, all three of our on-call consultants first. If we were just going to accept Mark's submittal, we would have been required to get two additional proposals, because these are the rules of the city for contracts, and this is how purchasing works. So we first went to try to make it as easy as possible to our on-call consultants. Only one on-call consultant had this capacity. They present, they gave us a fantastic proposal that covered absolutely everything in, that the board had asked for with a very concise, very clear methodology for what they were going to do, okay? A third consultant was not in our, one of our on-calls, but private the way Mark is. They also submitted a fantastic proposal that covered absolutely everything the board asked for. Both of those proposals were $15,000. Mark also submitted a proposal, which I will say did not address all of the things that the board had asked for, at least in his proposal. It was by far had the least amount of information that addressed what we were asking for of all three proposals. So it was clear to us that what we were asking for was probably in that realm, and we negotiated down from that price, okay? The first, they were higher before. We got them as low as we possibly could. We skinnied up the proposals as much as we could. I sent you the, what the fee was last Friday, and I told you, "We can get this done in two months if we, if you pay us, and potentially by the August planning board, if you submit payment," which is this. If you had asked for the RFP, we would have provided it, but that is not something that we typically do. The board, I have sent the proposal so they could see what it was and what they're agreeing to get. So that's, I mean, we've tried to do exactly what they said, and I think, I think we did a pretty good job of securing a consultant through the city's process in one month, and getting them to agree to complete the entire thing in two months. I just want to clear the air there, because there's nothing shady going on from our end.
Can I ask when you received those reports, those proposals?
Who, I'm sorry, what was your question?
You asked when you received those proposals?
When did we receive them?
Yeah.
We received, we, Mark submitted his immediately without any, without, I mean, we didn't even had a chance to respond to him, so that was the first week after the planning board meeting. We received the second one the second week after the planning board meeting, and we received the third one the third week after the planning board meeting. And so each week, we received another proposal, and we let them know, "We want to get started on this really quickly, please get this to us as soon as you can." I reached out to all of them literally the same day.
It's just frustrating to get a bill on Friday without knowing that. It'd be nice to have that history, knowing what's going on, but to just get a bill...
I let Nick know that we got three submittals, we evaluated them all, and this is the one that we went with.
That was Friday, right?
It was Friday.
That was last, that was literally the day, if you look at the date this contract was signed, it was Friday. That's the date the contract was signed. We got things to you as quickly as we possibly could.
So again, I'm back to the same dilemma. I mean, I want to hear what the contract, what the, what the people that we've contracted with, I have got the other side of the equation, which is the public testimony. I need to hear from the public. I am not comfortable at all recommending that we move forward until I've got at least public testimony to be able to rely on to say, "Hey, here's what we've got." And I'll be honest, I, and I'm not speaking for the board, I'm speaking for myself, I want to know what the contractor that the city has selected is going to, is going to give us for feedback, and have the city be able to look at it, review it, digest it, and give us a salient piece of information that we can, we can work from.
I just want to follow up and say, I mean, this is a table of information. This is not a study or a methodology. I have no idea of the context of these numbers, and I wouldn't know what, even how to evaluate them, or the first thing to do with them. Honestly, if the board decided, "Okay, we're just going to let staff look at these numbers", I have no idea what I would do with these numbers. I would probably write a report and ask 52 questions.
So I'll ask for any feedback from the board, your level of confidence in where we are right now, your level of confidence in waiting to hear back from the consultant that the city has contracted with, David?
I just wanted to follow up a little bit on Heather's initial comments to you regarding liability issues, that it was my understanding that if the public has not noticed of this tonight, that we potentially risk some. I understand that they also do, but isn't that a shared liability issue? If the public has not noticed...
I understand your question. Let me just put it in perspective. Let me just clarify the question and the answer. At the last meeting, this board postponed the public hearing to tonight. So from their perspective, they're fine. I was operating under the assumption that we were all on the same page, we were hiring this consultant, there would be nothing to report tonight, why would they come back? Why would we have a public hearing? So, you know, half a dozen people have called me and asked me if this was going to be on the agenda, and I said, "No." So all of those people, and it's not on the agenda as a public hearing. It's on as other business. So it, for better, for worse, that's the story. So the board has to contend with the fact that the public has been told that there's no public hearing.
Did you have something, Teresa? Sorry.
I'm just a little concerned.
Well?
I guess, all right, you asked, I made my comment.
Move up a little.
Sorry. I'm just a little concerned. I understand where Heather's coming from, I understand where Mr. Sandborn's coming from. We did postpone, and I don't really quite know how to say this really politely, but staff made the determination to tell the public it wasn't a public hearing. And the board didn't, and it was postponed. So I think that's a little bit of an issue, frankly, that, you know, that was a determination that, that, well, that's all I'm going to say.
Yeah, but again, it leaves us in an awkward scenario.
It leaves us in a very awkward position.
Whether, you know, wherever the, wherever the issue lies, I don't want to get into that, but the end result is the public was told that we weren't going to have a conversation about this tonight, and I'm 100% uncomfortable passing judgment on it without at least continuing the public hearing to open it up. Whether we get any input or not, or whether we get any salient input or not is immaterial, we just got to give people the opportunity.
I'm looking for my agenda, which is around here somewhere.
I think that, Missy?
Yes, yes, please.
They, the path that the applicant has chosen, at no point... They, the path that the applicant has chosen, at no point did they let us know that they were doing this. At no point did they say, hey, staff, you know, we're going to go ahead with our own thing, and we want to present it. They didn't tell me that till 4:30 today, and they received notice that we had hired a consultant last Friday. So I think to some degree, it's, you know, that's-
That's a little bit of an ambush on our end.
Yeah, so-
You know, and I get it.
I mean, I could have made changes, I could have changed the agenda, I could have, you know, we post the agenda on Friday.
What's, and we're still looking at August before we get information back from the-
Well, the contract says they have 60 days, but that's from the time of when they get paid. And can they do it quicker? Probably, maybe, but they have 60 days, so. But I think that the board maybe has two decisions to make. Number one, do they accept this? And if so, you have to decide whether you want to do that tonight or next month. And the other is, you know, do you actually want staff to proceed with this third-party consultant? So maybe you can break it down that way.
Good point. Okay, so, yes, Matt?
First, I want to ask a question about in nine days, five days, and when that clock started, and what it means, what is this default approval?
So-
I read about-
Regulatory.
Yeah, so, yeah, from a regulatory perspective, Mr. Cronin believes that the clock ran out at the April Planning Board meeting. The city does not agree, because at the last meeting, they're audibly on recording saying, you know, make a motion to postpone. You know, the board was trying to determine, should we table it, should we postpone it? And Mr. Sanborn said, we'd like if you postponed it. So, you know, I think we're taking that as they have given permission to postpone it to tonight, which means they do not have, in our opinion, the board has till, in our opinion, the regulatory time period has not run out. However, tonight, they do need to agree to postpone it to next month, if that's what the board wants to do. Or if they don't agree to postpone, the board must make a motion to approve or deny tonight.
So those are the two paths we've got in front of us, yes?
Follow up.
Mm-hmm. So again, just so we're all clear, the, there's two pieces. We either can ask the applicant if they want to postpone till we, till we get back the information from the consultant, or, well, three paths. So we accept the, we accept the data that we've gotten from, in tonight's meeting, we go to the public hearing for next month's meeting, with the full anticipation of saying, okay, here's the public data, here's the last chance for anybody to be heard regarding this, and make a, make a determination at that meeting. We could ask them to wait until we hear back from the city, from the people that the city has selected, or we can move forward with a approval or denial tonight.
Quick question on that then. Do you anticipate, this is to you, Heather, do you anticipate that this consulting firm that we hired last Friday will have something for us in the August meeting?
Well, as I said, they have 60 days from the time of being paid. So if Mr. Cronin chooses not to pay them, you know, or waits a week, or two, or Mr. Sanborn, you know, it depends on that date. So, and we're already sort of, I think if they were paid immediately, we probably could still get something by the August Planning Board meeting. But again, it's contingent on, as he noted, we didn't proceed with any, any study until receiving payment.
So then a question comes back down to, are we comfortable with what was presented tonight as, as a follow-up to our request for information? I saw, Teresa, I saw your hand.
I have a question. When I look at this proposal, it says they will begin work 30 days after payment, and the work will be completed 60 days after receiving payment. Was there ever any question back to them?
I did not even see, I didn't even see that in there.
Well, it's in what you handed out.
The understanding was that they would, I mean, we had a verbal conversation over the phone, where I told him, let's hold off on scheduling the kickoff meeting until they pay you, because we, they were ready to go. So that might be some standard language that they have in there, that, you know, maybe we should get that revised.
Well, the only reason I ask is I think it's important as to whether we're talking about July board meeting or August.
Or September.
August.
Or September.
No, I think we-
Yeah, 60 days. If they get it back to us in 60 days, it's going to be September, I think. And so, you know, that, that-
I think the assumption between, with the conversations with the consultant, is that it would be August, the August meeting. That's what all our conversations were.
Well, I guess my question would be, you're shaking your head, so you can make your comment. But my question would be, can we, is your, do we think they could get it done in 30 days before the July meeting? Because I, I'm cognizant of the fact that we have held them up, and I certainly have done enough development projects myself, that, you know, that time is money. So to me, September seems to be really a little bit far out there. I think for them and for us to, we need to wrap it up. So the question would be, you know, this, well, I've asked my question. 60 days seems to me a long-
I don't know the answer to that, because we didn't discuss, we wanted to give them sufficient time to reach out to who they needed to and get responses.
Amanda?
Regardless of this, the question that you said, are we okay with this?
Yeah.
And I have to point out, I, I do not do this kind of statistical or, or any kind of study in regards to that. But what is not apples to apples for me, and what you mentioned before, is the Nashua date of pulling those police calls, and the other dates are not apples to apples, unless you were to tell me differently. But 2018 numbers versus 2022, or similar, don't seem to be apples to apples to me. So in my comfort zone, if I were to be asked right now, am I accepting of this, I'd say no. And it's due to what you have given me as the backup data of, just without having actual numbers here to show me what dates they're talking about. As Teresa pointed out before, to give a little bit more background information behind this, and I'm not discrediting any of your knowledge on this, it was just, I need the backup that goes to this to be able to say, yes, I can accept this or not, accept that.
Well, the reports can be as long as you'd like. I typically don't include that type of detail. Actually, that call data was in the report that Attorney Cronin supplied to you last month. And I just want to read to you what the scope of services, which is what we got from staff, of what they were looking for, which I included in my proposal. So I think my proposal covered what the scope was. Review demand for public safety services, police, fire, emergency medical, for compatible facilities of similar size and function. I think that's on here. Project potential demand for public safety services of the proposed facility Phase One and Two, on here. Estimate potential impacts of the project in the city police and fire departments. I think that's reflected here. I mean, I, I try to be judicious with presenting information. Some people like to give reams of paper. I try to get to the point, and that's what this does. If you want a year, you know, the past year data for Nashville Police, that's easy to do. I have that contact. The fire number there is recent. I spoke to that woman last week, so that's, that's up to date. When I gathered that data, you know, we're just coming out of COVID, so I wasn't comfortable that would be skewing numbers. If you got, you know, numbers during COVID, or when we're coming out of COVID, so that's why I got those two numbers. I'm trying to be as transparent as I can, so.
Jess?
So I hear what you're saying, but as an engineer, I do engineering reports all the time. I can't call a police department and say, oh, how many accidents did you have last year? And they tell me 12 over the phone, and I write, oh, per conversation, 12 on the phone. That doesn't fly in engineering parlance. I need something of a written documentation from that community. I'm not saying I need every call log necessarily, but you're telling me this was all relayed over the phone. So to me, that's considered hearsay. You said you called Oxford, and he said to you over the phone, these were the numbers off the top of his head.
Off the cuff, yeah.
I'm just quoting your words.
Well, the police chief, the fire department's right here.
Okay, but what I'm saying is, if you can get, what I'm saying is, if it's just a phone call, it's hearsay. If he sent you a letter, something to say, here, like I say-
I could absolutely get that.
And that's all I'm saying, is that's the backup. I think some of us kind of feel-
If the, if the board wants that type of backup, I can certainly do that. I've been doing this for 20 years. No planning board has ever asked for call logs for any of my reports. That doesn't mean it doesn't happen. I have nothing to hide. They're right here. I can make copies of them, so it's very simple to do. And, you know, getting it over the phone, I can, he was, such a small town, when I called the police department, the chief answered the phone. So he's easy to get ahold of. So I'm sure he'll give me an email or something in writing. So it's all up and up, and I can do the same with the fire department in Nashville, because that was over the phone. She's a busy woman, but that's, you know, she's given me reports in the past, so I don't mind doing that either. That's fine.
Okay, so-
Nothing to hide.
So that said, again, I'll come back to my question again. Are we comfortable accepting this as our, as our documentation, if you will, for municipal services study that we have been delaying on? Matt?
My other question is, why, you know, the precedent of asking for this? I know we can. I'm going to restate that I'm uncomfortable asking for this, for this purpose. I, I just don't see the relevance of it, and I, as I said last month, where are we going to get the data? Now we're going to split hairs and start arguing about how we get the data. So how would you like to see, what if the other, the RKG group does the same thing, right? Is that going to be valid, because it's from the RKG group, which is independent? Like, I, I don't know. I mean, what is the, the right way to do it? I think, I think that the applicant should call the question, ask us to vote on it.
Okay, well, we'll go that route if we get there. Any other questions from the board? Okay, so, yeah?
I have one more question. So let me just make sure I understand this, because you're offering to give us the data and the background and the research, and what you did, and maybe if we have some other questions, just flush it out. You're saying we've already signed a contract?
No.
We've signed a contract, yes.
You signed a contract, so you're obligated in the contract with RKG?
Well, I mean, I actually, I don't, I don't, I actually don't know how any of that works. I have never been in this position before. We have not paid them, so, I mean, I don't know that they're, I don't think they're going to turn around and try to sue us. I mean, I think they're going to go, oh, well, okay.
Well, is your, I guess what I'm asking, is your contract contingent, you signed a contract contingent on the agreement of the applicant to pay, or the agreement of the applicant?
I would guess that's right.
That would be my, that would be my assumption. Honestly, I did not contemplate this scenario, and I'm not proficient with these types of legal, I mean, we utilize contracts, you know, for our on-call consultants. It was approved by our purchasing manager. If they're not paid, they're, they're not going to do the work. That's the end of the story.
Well, yeah, but if you sign a contract, you're going to pay somebody to do something.
The contract was that they would agree to a certain amount of work based on a certain price. That was the agreement. You know, this is, you pay us this money, and we're going to do this work. That's, that's what the contract, it's exactly what you see in front of you.
So this is the contract?
Yeah. And then we filled out all the information needed, they provided us with certificate of insurance, they, you know, they provided, they filled out whatever paperwork the purchasing manager needed for them to be, to be paid and to work for the city, so they filled out a number of forms. And so we went through all the steps for them to be, for us to be able to work with them and pay them.
So they're expecting to do this upon payment?
Correct.
Did you have a question, girl? Gotcha. You want to, yeah?
Yes, sir, thank you very much. Teresa, I can only tell you that this is the, I don't know how many times I've had to pay for extra consultants for this deal, on behalf of Heather, right? And every single time, she has said, nothing will happen until you come up here with a check. They will not start any work until you come up here with a check.
Correct, that's correct.
There is no check, there is no obligation, unless it's completely antithetical to every other request that's been made.
Just making sure.
I just want to clarify-
I just want to make sure we're, the city's obligated.
Yep, and I appreciate that.
I would also just clarify, of the three other major site plan applications that we have, last month and this month, all three of them have been asked to provide traffic studies and water analysis, which are the two that they were asked to provide.
Which are an understandable request on our side.
Correct, I'm just saying, there's nothing different about this project with regard to the studies, up until this point.
No, I wasn't questioning that. I was just questioning if for some reason we went back and asked for more data, or accepted with conditions the report we've got now, if we were also going to be obligated to pay RKJ. I was just trying to figure, you know-
He's correct. Until they pay, the work will not commence.
I know he's got plenty of money, but I didn't think we need to spend all of it.
Again, so now we're down two paths. So I'm going to look and say, are we comfortable accepting the data that, that we've got, whether we agree to have asked for it or not? I got two opportunities. I can ask you to agree to, I have three, to agree to postpone the meeting to the July meeting, with the understanding that we notice it, and give the public a chance to weigh in on the data that we've got here. Or we can go forward with a vote. And I'll look for a motion from somebody at the board. Go ahead, Matt, sorry.
Mr. Chairman, before you do that, could I say a few short words?
Surely.
Just on the, on the time clock, the video's the video.
Yep.
And I think Ms. Shank was correct, saying that I have a different view of it. We, of course, think that-
Absolutely.
It has to be an express waiver, like they do in most towns, or an extension of the deadline. And if you recall, last month, at the end of the discussion on this, we voted on a number of waivers, you just moved on to the next case without making any decision whatsoever. It was a call for you to take action, it was your motion, not his. But that's, be decided in another forum, we don't have to get into that tonight.
Thanks.
My final question, as I'm trying to be crystal clear on all of this. Did we have to notice this meeting for the public? Or was it, was a notice continued from the previous meeting?
It was notice continued from the previous meeting.
Okay, so I think that-
Well, that's a different story then.
I think that telling, if somebody made a mistake and told the public that they, that this would not be heard-
It's not us.
Well, it, it just reflects on the, unfortunately, it reflects on the board. The public is not in favor of this, and they're going to feel like the board, in a meeting that they were told was not public, that decisions were made.
In fairness, I'm comfortable in saying that I did not mistakenly tell them that. So, you know, I think that, I think that this has gone on long enough. I think that, even though I vowed not to do it, I, I'm ready to move approval.
I have one more question. Trying to get everybody maybe out of a bind here. The question I have is, you know, I do agree a little bit, or I do agree with Amanda, the apples and oranges. I mean, I would have liked to have seen all the data be 2022. I might have liked to see the data before COVID and after COVID. Having said that, and I might have liked to see, I don't, you probably could answer this anyway, I don't know which one of these are hotel casinos, or just if they're all casinos.
It's, there's, there's a-
It's true. They're all casinos.
Well, the casino in Maine, Oxford, I broke out with the hotel.
Oh, you did? Where is that?
Yeah, down below, on the commercial uses.
Oh, I'm sorry, I didn't even pick that up.
And then Boston Billiards does not. All of these have food.
Okay, but I was just asking, because, but, so it's really Oxford's the only one that has a hotel?
Right.
Okay, gotcha. But I guess my question would be, if we ask Mr. Fugé to expand what he's done a little bit, if he chooses, and you call RKG and say, we need this information by whatever the date is, July 17, and, you know, if you're willing to pay for it, and then we just make date is, July 17th, and, you know, if you're willing to pay for it, and then we just make a decision, we're going up or down on the July board meeting? I mean, I agree with Matt, this has gone too long, but I, and I, and I understand there are a few things here that it would make me a little more comfortable if it's fleshed out a little bit, but, you know, I don't think, but it would be up to Mr. Sanborn as to whether they wanted to do that or not. If not, we have to call the question. I think you're right.
Yeah, I think that, I'm sorry, I was going to respond to.
So, Mr. Chairman.
I want to hear from the first.
Being that I have a little experience in where you sit today, right?
Yeah, God love you.
And God bless you, sir. Know a little bit about Robert Roberts and Masons, right? So you have more than two options available in, in front of you today. Now let me be as clear as my hand on a Bible today. I've never asked to extend. That is incorrect. What happened was, you, you had voted on all the other waivers that were in front of you and then because it was a busy night and we all, it happens to all of us, you just moved on. I stood up and came forward and said, sir, you have another motion in front of you if you, if you so choose so, and that is a motion to extend, but you need to do something because you can't not do anything because that's a requirement under rules. So as some, some of you may remember, I have only ever asked you to approve or to conditionally approve, which are the only two things I have ever asked for. Now that said, you have three motions in front of you tonight. I am not asking you to conditionally to, to, to continue the meeting, but that is an option, as I said last time, that is available to you to make to your board. I do not support that, but I don't have a vote. This is a decision you all need to make. I can't vote on that.
Yep, so I mean, it's, it's cut and dry. If you, if you don't want to do the extension and you're not, you're not agreeable to the extension, we're going to vote on it tonight.
I'd say then you, you can force a continuance because you just have that vote to do it, my displeasure. You can vote to approve, you can vote to disapprove. So you can do all three of them.
Mm-hmm.
Just, I don't have, I don't have a vote or recommendation in, in any of it.
Right, and again, so, so you do not want to continue the meeting. You want to, you want to, you don't, you don't want to continue the meeting till the July planning board meeting. You want a decision made tonight.
If I can say one more thing, if I feel allowed. Thank you very much. As I have said before, when I was offering to help pay for sidewalks, which is a whole nother discussion we'll have on another day, if it pleases the member of the board for informational purposes, after tonight, Teresa, I'll give you whatever you want. I'll ask Mark to complete it and he'll send it in to you. He'll make it as thick or as thin as you would like to see it with as much data or not matter for you, Jeff, and whether it's calls or logs. I'm happy to provide it because I think I've done, shown that through this entire process. If it's reasonable, if it's rational, I'm happy to do it. Now I'm happy to do it because we know what the data is going to say. It's going to say this isn't the type of, you know, traumatic potential event that some people are trying to make it out to be. We've disproven that every single time. We've disproven it again today, but I'm happy to finish it, happy to give it to, I'm happy to give it to you. Again, as, to the point of Matt, this is the first time you guys have ever walked this path and you're in a very strange place that I don't respectfully support, right? I just think I'm being, I'll politely say picked on, my project. We think we've done it all. We'd love to have your support. We'd love to get your approval and as I've shown in the past and I will show going forward, if you want something, ask me, I'll just give it to you and we'll make it, we'll make it happen because that's what I've always done and you know that.
Comments, questions? Anything else? Matt, you've got, I believe, you wanted to make a motion or you wanted to move for approval?
Well, I.
I mean, I actually heard you say move approval. I, I don't know if that was a motion.
What is the final motion to be made? Because.
Well, again, I, we heard, we heard loud and clear that they don't want to.
Offer to continue.
Yeah, they don't want to continue.
So I'll just take the vote then. I will, I will move for, so what would be the site plan approval? I don't know what the language is.
Oh, gosh.
Do we have to do the whole statement of fact?
Findings of fact.
Yeah.
Findings of fact, yeah. But I don't have it in, I don't have anything in my report.
I pulled up last month's recommendations so that, to use for, if you wanted to recommend approval, I have, I have these right here if you want to look at the, so you, you approved all of these and this is the language for the major site plan approval.
Okay, that's your motion, Matt? I want to read it into the record. So again, findings of fact based on the RSA's pertaining to deadlines. I know I want to mention that.
Well, that was only.
I know, but the site plan, you know, the site plan regulations, the information that we've gotten from, from the applicant, the public testimony that we've heard is what we're basing our, the information that we got tonight is what we're basing our findings of fact on. So in here, we've got, in our packet, well, you don't have it, but.
It's, it's, you, you already approved all of those, so the, this is the motion for the major site plan, if that's what you want to, if that's what the motion you want to make.
Is that your motion, Matt?
So I'm looking at 5.6.
5.6.
From last time.
5.6 is to grant, oh, I could look it online too. 5.6 is to grant major site plan approval for the construction of Phase One consisting of a new building of 45,000 square feet. Precedent conditions, one through, whoops, how do you run this thing?
Seven.
Seven. And then subsequent conditions, whoops, you're going the wrong way, sorry. Is there something on the next page or no? That's it, no, that's it. Subsequent conditions, one through six. Is that your motion?
That is my motion.
Okay, so we've got a motion on the table. Do we have a second?
I'll second. I'm trying to get to the.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
We've got three ayes. Amanda, four ayes. David?
Opposed.
Nay. Carol?
I'm going to abstain because I'm.
Okay, and I, I vote nay.
Not comfortable with this.
So we've got four approvals. So we, four approvals, two noes, one abstention.
Thank you, thank you very much.
So you are all set, right? Is that the only thing? We don't need anything, nothing else on that?
You're, you're, you're done.
My goodness.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, y'all. I appreciate it. Mr. Chairman, aye?
Yes.
Teresa, if you, even though you have approved it and thank you very much, if you, any, if you want more of this report, I'm happy to do whatever you need to make available. All right, just let me know.
I appreciate it, thank you.
Thank you all.
Oh, yeah, item eight on behalf of Boys and Girls Club. So we're not, we're not done.
Unfortunately, we're not done yet.
We're not done yet, yeah.
No, we missed Boys and Girls Club.
Yeah, no, we're done with you, sorry.
Thank you very much.
I didn't mean to say that that way, but we're done with you.
So we have a few more items.
So we got a couple more items and we'll try to get you out of here in five minutes. Wilcox and Barton on behalf of the Boys and Girls Club request an amendment to a conditional approved major site plan application approved for construction of a new structure to be used as a community center at 76 Community Drive. Could we get a quick staff update on that?
Sure. They are, you've already conditionally approved this project. They've been working through the engineering comments based on test fit data that has come after that decision. They can't meet the city's stormwater regulations, so they're requesting a waiver to that. Engineering is supportive of it, but we have to go through this administrative process of you approving that waiver.
It should be straightforward. I'm going to, just for the record, recuse myself on this and Carol's going to take it. I'm not going to get away from the table because hopefully it'll go quickly, just for the record.
Rules.
I don't know, you mind if I go to the hall?
Two things, you have to say why you're recusing and you have to leave the room.
You have to say why.
So we need a motion on the waiver request, correct?
There's three waivers. Two of them are related to the stormwater, one is related to the datum.
All right, hold on here.
And the findings of fact, I assume would be their request.
This finding of fact business is totally new to me tonight, so.
Yeah, you were, you were not here.
It's in the report.
Legal requested that we make a formal findings of fact for each.
Based on the material presented in the legislature that.
Okay. So. Based on the information provided to us in our packets because we've had no testimony.
Right.
Correct. Then what's the next phrase?
You could just recommend that you grant the waivers as outlined in the report.
Okay, do we do them individually?
You can do them all together.
We can do them together, okay. So I need a motion to grant the three waivers as outlined in our packet, including a drainage waiver. Come on, go down here.
You having trouble with?
Oh, I'm having trouble.
You have the report?
Yeah, I have the report.
It's all the way at the bottom is the recommendations.
So are they all drainage waivers?
Yep, here.
There's one related to the survey data, datum.
Here's, here's the recommendations section, it's just right there. Those are the three waivers.
All right, thank you.
Yep.
Okay, so a waiver to section 15.03 parentheses 3, 22.07 parentheses 2, 22.07 parentheses 3.
So move.
I'm sorry, can I clarify, it's subject to the conditions that staff noted in the report?
Yes.
Okay.
Second.
Thank you.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
I don't know.
The motion carries.
Thank you.
Motion, Matt.
Now, may we entertain a motion to adjourn?
We actually have a few more things on the agenda.
We may not entertain a motion to adjourn.
Novice group has requesting, we're recommending that you table it to no date certain. They keep requesting to postpone.
So they did provide us for the formal request to.
Yes.
Okay, just don't want to run into the same issue.
In every instance, that's usually the case.
Thank you, Carol, sorry.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, so that's item 10. We've got a request to postpone to no date certain. Would someone like to make a motion to?
So move.
Second.
To postpone that to no date certain. We got a motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries 11. Let's read that into the record.
Kalapa Realty Trust requests major site plan approval. Actually, I can just tell you, they're, this is the Club 55. They're requesting also to postpone to the July 19th meeting.
Okay, applicants requested a postponement to the July 19th meeting. Would someone like to make a motion to postpone that to the July meeting?
Second.
Motion's made in second and all those in favor?[1607.13]